Hey, good afternoon everybody and welcome to the continuation of our workshop on the Bahia Mar. I just want to read a couple of things into the record. City of Fort Lauderdale is hosting commission meetings in person as well as in our workshop. For additional information on how to view this meeting, please go to www.fortlauderdale.gov. For additional information on how to view this meeting, please go to www.fortlauderdale.gov/citycommissionmeetings. I'll repeat that, www.fortlauderdale.gov/citycommissionmeetings, plural. To help ensure decorum, we ask that you please abide by the following guidelines. Please refrain from any behavior that is disruptive, distracting, profane, or inhibits the meeting in any way. Two, if you wish to speak on a specific agenda item, please sign up with the City Hall Lobby Up Front, and a member of the City Clerk's office staff will be there to assist. So I also want to say that, as an additional further announcement, please be advised that the City Commission met today at noon with city staff in accordance with Florida Statute Section 255.065 (15) D in order to discuss the various unsolicited proposals submitted to the city regarding the city's water treatment plan. This meeting was exempt and not open to the public. However, the meeting was transcribed as required by Florida Statute, section I just read, and will be available to the public once the City Commission provides us notice of an intended decision for the project. Having said that, we'll probably have an open meeting on the subject sometime in January, where we'll present to the public the presentation that was presented to us today so that we can elicit, illicit, not illicit, comments from the public as to the choices and the options that we have going forward in trying to get a water treatment plan for our city. Sound good? We're working. So I hope you all had a great Thanksgiving, and glad you're all here this afternoon to discuss the continuation of the Bahia Mar project. And last time we met, we had discussion amongst the City Commission, and I had promised the public that we would entertain a public comment from folks. I have a bunch of requests here, so I don't think I really need to summarize what's been going on. You probably all are as well informed as anyone else here on the Commission, so... But just to get things started, as you know, the city has been talking with the developers of the Bahia Mar project and trying to revise the current city site plan. The site plan calls for a number of buildings to be built as rental units, and with the remaining 41 or 42 years left on the lease, there's been some discussion about trying to reform that and to talk about the possibility of building condominiums with a longer-term permanent lease. So with that in mind, I have, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask that you line up here, if you could. Give everyone a couple minutes to be able to speak. If you need a little bit longer, that's fine, but try to keep your comments so that everyone gets a chance to speak. We're gonna try to end this around 3:00, if possible. I think we can do that. So I'll call three at a time. I'll start with Barbie Pearson, followed by Steve Gannon, followed by Marilyn Mamanu. Barbie, are you here?
Yes.
Commissioner, how are you? We just started. Yeah, it was good. It was good. Lunch was good. Hello, Barbie. No? Push the button at the bottom of the speaker.
Sorry. Can you hear me now? Okay.
Yes.
Hello, everyone, Commissioners and Mayor. I'm very concerned about what may happen. We can't afford to lose the boat show to West Palm Beach or wherever. They are the economic engine of our local economy that produces so much revenue. They aren't interested in being controlled by condo associations, even if managed by one hotel brand. Besides, what happens with condo politics, as I know, can impact the show. Informant wants to expand the show and incorporate the mega yachts. If they move on, our world-class yachting center loses an internationally acclaimed boat show. What else on the Bahia Mar property could produce such revenue and jobs? It would be a huge economic loss. I believe in the beginning it was set up as a yachting center and marina, and that's what we are, Fort Lauderdale, the yachting capital of the world. And the question today is the direction to give to the staff. Stop, get answers to the questions raised today before moving forward, resolve the crucial boat show concerns, and conduct extensive public outreach, and then call another workshop to provide direction. We really have to preserve the boat show. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Gannon, followed by Marilyn Mamanu, followed by Jerry Jordan. Hi, Steve.
Hey, Steve Gannon, and my feelings are that, are that a public-private interest partnership in this instance is very detrimental, is very risky, and, and as Barbie has said, we need to, the main thing is to save the boat show, and as we saw at the last meeting, it's fragile. It can be fragile when you relinquish control to some other entity that, that probably has more of a competing interest than a synergistic one. And, and down the road, as things get sold off and different entities get involved, and God knows what happens, it's very detrimental, it's just very fragile, and no one wants to see that boat show go away. So I can tell that at the last meeting, everyone's in horror of that, and we need to make sure that is the forefront of everything we handle here, even if it means somehow not doing this, not going forward, or at least slowing it down, resolving issues, going through everything very carefully, and not be too presumptuous about being able to embed language that will handle everything that could come in the future 100 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Marilyn, followed by Jerry Jordan, followed by Kenny Tate. Kenny, did you want to speak at the end? Speak at the end, yeah. So then it would be Bill Brown.
Hi, Marilyn. Hello, Commissioners. First, congratulations to the Commission and the efforts of the Mayor and Commissioner Glassman to improve this relationship between the city and its tenant. This was a bad relationship from the beginning, and it's gotten worse over time. Obviously, the tenant thinks so, or he wouldn't be willing to give up so much to get control of the property for 100 years so that he can build condominiums. I believe this is the only way he can get out from under the existing lease and the 2017 approved site plan that turns out to be unbuildable. But no matter how well you negotiate, we still end up losing control of the land with condos on public property and all the liability that goes with it, with the uncertainty around the boat show's long-term viability and private open space that the public is only allowed to use per a lease. And the terms of that lease were lousy, as you recall, Mr. Mayor. All this bad stuff for another 100 years. Here's a thought: Let's get divorced. Put the possibility on the table, take a few months, and give some money to Ernst &amp; Young to explore it. What's a few months compared to 100 years? You all got an email from Lauderdale Tomorrow offering a possible solution. I totally support it. You can take that option of not negotiating the lease now and waiting 40 years to get the land back, but you can get it back now. You have that opportunity, if you just seize it. You don't have to renegotiate the lease or the site plan. You have the power to say no. As a former Director of Zoning for New York City's Department of City Planning, I participated in numerous value adjustment discussions. This is done all the time in the development world. I'll bet the tenant has figured out to the penny what he is willing to give up for what he wants. Don't be put off by the so-called complexity of the approach. The question today is what direction to give the staff. We ask that you direct the staff to stop for the time being. Get the answers to the questions being raised before moving forward. Resolve crucial boat show concerns, conduct public outreach, then call for another workshop to provide direction. Let's explore with the tenant the option of separating our interests and moving on. He wants fee simple control of a valuable piece of beachfront land. We want back the intercoastal land, control of the boat show and the marina. Terms can be negotiated. As long as each side gets approximately what they want, then we might have a deal. Thank you.
All right, great. Thank you so much. Jerry, followed by Bill Brown, followed by Gary Cotton.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. My name's Jerry Jordan. I've lived in Fort Lauderdale for over 50 years. And I was here years ago, five, six years ago, I got to speak here about 1:30 a.m. We've been against Bahia Mars wanting to take over our public land. I won't say the same thing everybody else is saying. We're very concerned. It's our 39 acres. We've been anticipating that we're gonna get it back in so many years, give it to our kids, our grandchildren, and enjoy it. I mean, I believe that if you give up a couple acres now, you're starting to retreat. In 10 years, the next Commissioner's gonna give up a couple acres, and a couple acres. Just picture this real quickly. So they build units on there, so 300, 400 people move into these units. And you don't think those 300 or 400 people aren't gonna lobby in a couple years to get rid of the boat show? Oh, that boat show is a nuisance. Let's get rid of it. And if the Commission's not strong and have backbone, they're gonna say, "Well, we don't want to offend you 300 or 400 people in those condominiums. We're gonna, you know, cave and, and, you know, maybe let the boat show go somewhere else." And it will. It's very easy for the boat show, a high-profit thing like that to go, as we were talking about in the audit, down to Miami, down to the Keys, Palm Beach. I just think that if the boat show leaves, you're gonna get hearing a lot of the hotels and the condominiums, the hotels and the restaurants are gonna be pretty mad if that boat show leaves. I don't know why they don't have somebody here now begging to not let any more condominiums, not do anything that's gonna cause interruption to the boat show. A really profitable event. And to give any land up at all is a caving and backing up. So I just would ask you, please, don't give any land up. Just say no. Now we're done with it. Let them build whatever they want, and everybody clear out in 2061 or whatever. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jerry. I won't be here in 30 years for them to be complaining to me, but they'll be dancing on my grave, I'm sure. Bill Brown, followed by Gary Cotton, followed by...
Mayor, what kind of dance would that be, do you think?
It would not be a happy dance.
Okay.
Andrew, did you want to speak now or at the end? Where's Andrew? There you are. Do you want to speak at the end or now? At the end, okay. Okay, Bill.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the Commission. Bill Brown, President of Central Beach Alliance. I stand here today before to voice the concerns of the Central Beach membership over the lack of information until this month on this land agreement. We've remained neutral, and currently, we still are. Until all the terms of the agreement, the impact on the international boat show, revenue projections to the city, and public information has been properly distributed and disclosed, we were asked to wait until after your last workshop when these, all these issues would be openly discussed. From that workshop, we learned that there are still unresolved issues that need to be resolved, and so we continue to wait so that we can provide accurate information to our membership. Yes, there is support for and against, but please allow the community and the residents of the Barrier Island to make an informed and take an informed position. The CBA membership is concerned, is concerned and cares about the Barrier Island and the long-term success of the boat show. An example of our concern is, at any time during the negotiations, has there been discussions addressing the future growth needs on the boat show as a result of this new lease agreement? Now we're hearing that a vote might be taken by this Commission before the last meeting of this year or early January. This raises concern since the CBA does not meet during the month of December, as many of our members and residents are busy with other holiday commitments. It has been a past practice to not meet in December. And our next regularly scheduled meeting is the fourth Thursday in January 2022. Some longtime members have been quick to point out that this land lease vote is much like the land swap agreement on 3000 Alhambra. Mayor, you might recall that vote when it was called at a last meeting of the year at a very late hour with little public knowledge and input. And it was a land agreement swap. The question is, what direction to give the staff? That's what you are here for today. We ask that you direct staff to pause for the time being. Get the answers to the questions raised from not only the last meeting, hopefully there'll be more questions raised during this workshop and during public input before moving forward. Resolve the critical boat show concerns. We, the CBA, ask you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and the Commission, members of the Commission, to do the right thing. What is that right thing? Conduct extensive public outreach, and then call another public workshop to provide that direction to staff. That direction will impact the next generation of residents and visitors of Fort Lauderdale for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
And we stand to work with the developer and the boat show people and our district commissioner. Thank you.
So just to bring a little history to this. I know you were not the president at the time, if I recall, but in 2017, did not the CBA approve the current site plan and development?
No. There was not a vote taken on the current site plan. Commissioner, you and I have had this discussion.
I was there in a vote...
The original, and we have it in the meeting minutes, the original site plan was pulled by the developer.
What were they voting on? I just want to get clarity on that. Back in the Bahia Mar, when the developer made their presentation...
Of the original site plan.
Yeah.
Then they later came back and pulled that site plan and presented a new site plan, but no action was taken on the, on this current site plan from 2018.
Okay, all right. And, and so what we're doing now with the, with the workshops and the public outreach, this is kind of what you're asking for us to do, right?
Right. And, and as we were asked, let's get all the information. Let's bring everything forward to the community, get it out there, and then disseminate information properly and accurately and at a membership meeting, and then take a position or remain no position.
Well, I'd rather you took a position. Obviously, you're the most impacted area, neighborhood in the, in the entire community, so... All right, we're gonna do our best to get that...
And very well, it might be that the position is, we support this Commission and what they've negotiated. But we're just, we're learning the terms and we're getting the information as everyone is just in the last few weeks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I ask a question? And, sorry, just so I understand, Bill, the reason you haven't taken a position is what, as an organization?
We were asked by this Commission, by a member of the Commission, let's wait until after the last workshop. And that's when all the financials and the terms, everything was gonna really be discussed publicly then. And they were gonna have the site plan. That was the last workshop. Then you continued it till today because there were some concerns, not only now public input, but there were some, what we felt concerns over the boat show that were still out there unresolved. And we're hoping today maybe they'll find out a little bit more about that. So that's why we have not had a public meeting and allowed the developer and the boat show people and our Commissioner to address our membership, to, to give that information, once it's all finalized and known.
Okay, thanks. Okay, thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Is it, is it Gary?
It's pronounced Gary. Yeah, Gary Cotton. I've been a resident of Fort Lauderdale since 1960 and seen the growth of the town. I'm a financial, retired CPA, financial executive. Have done billions of dollars in deals with companies and familiar with the financial situation as much as I can. Also was involved with the discussions back in '17, if you recall. And I want to look at this from a financial perspective. First of all, I, I would like to determine what are the values that we're looking at? What does the developer have that we want? Well, they've sold the water rights, so they have those no longer. They have the rights to the hotel and the charters or whatever remains in the lease. But that is a very small part of the entire Bahia Mar. The golden nugget, which is the marina, is gone. Those revenues are gone. So now we're negotiating for 13, the rights to build 13 or 12 units. I'm not exactly how they are. What are the value of those rights? In my opinion, though, the rights of those are zero because they're not financeable. So you have the right to build it. We're not sure how successful they'll be if they're ever sold. And why hasn't one started? If this is such a great deal that they voted for in '17 and they haven't started one unit, why are we negotiating now? And what's the value of what they're negotiating? If you got an independent appraiser come and said, "Well, I've got these rights, but I can't build on it because I can't finance it," what's it worth? Zero. So why are we negotiating something that has zero value? Let the lease expire, let the people determine what they want when they're alive and not, we're all in the grave. Let them decide what's best for the city. We went through these negotiations. We went through these negotiations not too long ago, and it sounds like every time there's going to be a new commissioner, what, what kind of deal can we make? And the only thing we have are rights worth zero. And get that value. Don't trust my opinion. Get somebody to say, what, what is, what is the value of those rights?
Uh, Gary, can I just give you my opinion, and it's not the opinion of this commission? Notwithstanding anything you just said, I just don't think doing nothing is an option for me. Uh, I just don't want to see another 40-plus years of that land being in the same condition that it is today.
And here's how, here's how I would answer that.
Sorry?
Here's how I would answer that. I don't want it to be the same either. I don't think anybody does. But just because we don't want it to be the same, you've got to be a good negotiator and say, what are you giving up? They're not giving up a whole lot. And I think if you told them, you know what, stop negotiations, come back, we're going to let this thing expire, and by the way, if you do build anything, make sure you get rid of it because we're going to turn this into a park. I think then they would come back and say, you know what? All I've got is this cash flow coming in. It's very simple to value what that is over 40 years. I'll get the same amount of cash from the city. Now I don't have to deal with any more of these hassles, and the city owns the land. That's what I would predict would happen, not that nothing would happen. But you've got to negotiate that, and you've got to negotiate from strength.
Okay. All right, thank you. Uh, Mary Fertig, followed by, um, uh, Phil, do you want to speak at the end? And Barry, did you want to speak? Okay, everyone's speaking at the end. Mr. Locker, you want to speak at the end also? All right. So we have Mary Fertig, Dan Texera, uh, and Leanne Barber.
I'm just disappointed you didn't ask if I wanted to speak at the end. I, I'm going to ask you to bear with me...
I've kept you from speaking for months now, so...
You have. You've kept us speaking for almost nine months.
Yeah, I know.
Um, so I, I'm just going to ask you to bear with me because, uh, the person that was going to... I'm speaking right now on behalf of both Idlewild and Lauderdale Tomorrow because, uh, somebody else was going to do part, but they may not make it, so...
Okay.
Um, and, and I will be handing out a letter from both, uh, groups here.
I'm going to give it to Jeff.
I'll give that to Jeff. That's that one. Hi, John. Okay, this is the first time the public has been able to address Bahia Mar in commission chambers since March 16th, 2021, nearly nine months ago. On that date, three of you said you would not approve condos on public lands. The mayor asked Commissioner Glassman, was your quote in the paper about not building condos correct? The response was something to the effect of, "If you have listened to me since 2008, you would know I will not build condos on public lands." Three hours and 20 minutes into the tape, um, I must add some note to myself. Commissioner Glassman states, "I want to make one thing perfectly clear. I have no interest in the city being in the condominium business." He refers to building condos on public lands as opening Pandora's Box. And on the subject of a 100-year lease, he said, "We lose all leverage." The mayor made what I thought was a beautiful quote. Government is not in the business of making money. Government is in the business of providing quality of life for its citizens. Our public lands are disappearing. Condominiums are not disappearing. Apartments are not disappearing. Our public lands are disappearing. And unlike buildings, which can be torn down and built higher, built higher and wider, there is no public land to replace what we are losing. The world community is grappling with how to deal with sea level rise and global warming. But in Fort Lauderdale, we continue to pave, even knowing what the impact of more asphalt and fewer trees and less green space will be. The warning signs are all around us as we, as the water regularly floods in our neighborhoods. Please, don't be fiddling while Rome burns or Fort Lauderdale floods. I have sat in these chambers and listened to the woes about how some, about how we need something on the beach. The beach is thriving. And you all were there last night. You know it. You've been there many times in recent weeks at many different events. So you know the beach is thriving. I have sat and listened to how you've already lost Bahia Mar. No, that will happen when you go down the path of granting a 100-year lease. I speak on behalf of my neighborhood and begging you to look at other alternatives. You mentioned the Central Beach Alliance. We are within that. The amount of feet required for notice Dean, as you well know, because we have had every single person who has ever moved to develop this neighborhood come to our neighborhood to see what we're going to do and how it impacts us. So I would say we also are an impacted neighborhood. Um, once you build 410 residences on this public property, where will you look to privatize public property next? Holiday Park...
Hold it, hold it, hold it.
I appreciate the background music there.
It's Commissioner McKenzie's Entertainment Center.
Thank you. I appreciate that. But next time, we're going to like coordinate our music in our speech, okay? That was good. I said, next time we'll coordinate the background music with, thank you. Yeah, okay.
I'll give you, I'll give you extra time.
Are you kidding me?
Okay.
Keep going.
I speak on behalf of my neighborhood and begging you to look at other alternatives. Once you build 410 private residences on the public property, where will you look to privatize public property next? Holiday Park, George English Park, Schneider Park, Lockhart Park, these are very real concerns in our city. Previous commissions have made bad dishes and decisions regarding Bahia Mar. What you are thinking about doing will not only compound that, it will be worse than what your predecessors did. Because you have a choice. Just eight months ago, you knew that. On November 15th, we heard you were planning on bringing a lease forward on December 21st. One month away, no public input for the past nearly nine months, no lease for us to see, no focus groups. Why? Because you know how the public feels? Yeah, I think actually that is why. Um, how people feel is documented in emails, speakers at meetings, postings on Facebook, and in your own comments when you ran for election. No 100-year lease, private residences on public land. No 100-year lease, no private residences on public land. If you cannot stick to that very simple formula, then we ask you to consider alternatives. But please make sure those alternatives save public lands for a public purpose. And, and I just want to say, we have in our letters articulated some alternatives. I think there are many more. How we use our diminishing public lands is critically important for the future of this city. I would say, I haven't even gone into the financial that you did last time, but I think there's a lot to talk about there. But as I conclude, I'm going to ask that you consider what direction you provide to staff today. We request you simply ask them to pause while you take the time to answer the many questions that people have raised here today and in past weeks, while you resolve the boat show concerns, and while you conduct actual extensive public outreach. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Dan, hi, Dan.
Hello, Mayor Trentalis.
Followed by Leanne Barber, followed by Carol Anne Bartholomew. You'd like to what? That is the end.
The end of the beginning.
Hi, Dan.
Hello, hello, Mayor Trentalis and Commissioners. Dan Texera, lifetime resident of Fort Lauderdale, um, president of, uh, Harbor House Seas located within, uh, the Central Beach area. Uh, also Vice President Douglas Elliman, Real Estate New Development. Um, so speaking as a private individual, um, also property owner in District 1 and in District 2, uh, Vice Mayor and District Commissioner. So, um, I, I think I'm here to spread some good news about what's happening in Fort Lauderdale Beach. Um, I've handled the developments of the W Director's Sales. I was the Director of Sales of the Ritz Carlton, formerly St. Regis, and now presently the Director of Sales for Four Seasons Private Residences. And, you know, looking back on over the years, when we achieved $1,500 a square foot at the Ritz Carlton, we thought that was achieving, uh, a very high number. Well, I'm here today, and I do have backup to present to the commission. I have copies for all of you of the latest numbers that we will start finally closing at the Four Seasons Private Residence, December 6th. And we will be opening up the hotel, uh, taking reservations, uh, March 1st of 2022. We actually have achieved a number of over $2,000 a square foot. To be precise, we've done a quarter of a billion dollars in sales in the last two and a half years. And just in 2021, we have achieved $2,026 a square foot with over 100 million in sales with the average price of 5.3 million. So we've come a heck of a long way in Fort Lauderdale Beach. Uh, when you look at all the branded residential, and I think that the Bahia Mar site certainly would compare to any of the premier oceanfront sites. Actually, when people came in for the boat show, we actually had to get a driver to take people back and forth to Bahia Mar. Uh, unfortunately, most of the purchasers did not want to stay at the Bahia Mar, so they were staying either at the Ritz Carlton or other hotels that we aligned them up with. But one of the overwhelming comments that we did hear was they feel that Fort Lauderdale now, unlike years ago when I first started doing the St. Regis, people called a spring break, they're now calling us the Monaco of, of the United States, synonymous with the Venice of America. And, and what they, what they like is the world-class family destination that you all have, have really accomplished. Um, but presently at the Bahia Mar site, you don't have the restaurants of that level, the beverages, the entertainment. And they're looking for that, that, that location. So essentially, I'm here to tell you that Fort Lauderdale is here. We have beaten sales numbers over Palm Beach, over Surfside, over the Sunny Isles. So it's just a great feeling to know that we, you know, have achieved numbers higher than what other people have perceived, including Boca Raton, by the way. I remember 20 years coming up and speaking in front of the commission, telling you all how many deals I have lost to Boca. Well, now I have a lot of people from Boca that are moving back, wishing that they came to Fort Lauderdale first. So, um, to wrap it up, I think this type of development will really transform the city. It's a world-class yachting destination, but we need to make sure that there's a living destination with amenities and dining. Uh, the people throughout the world want to come here. And I think that this is the evident success of having, uh, Four Seasons. And I commend you all for creating a beach that has a world-class, family-friendly destination. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have a question for Dan.
Yes.
Thanks. Thank you, Dan. Um, and this is because of your expertise in real estate. I'm really curious, because we hear people, um, talk about the number of condos that are being proposed on the Bahia Mar site. In your experience, um, in the new developments, are people combining units at all?
You know, after the pandemic, we have found that people are looking for more livable space. So even with some of our newer developments like Celine, which we already have over 50% sold within, within a record-breaking 90 days, people definitely are combining. People are spending more time at home, and they're looking for larger square footage. And that is right now how we are designing our residences. When we speak to Kobe Karp, and, and by the way, I just want to say that Kobe Karp has, you know, truly done a great job with the Four Seasons development. So that when is needed, we have combined residence. So there's an overwhelming demand. Um, and, and not just within condominiums, but within the whole community of Fort Lauderdale. You're seeing some of these numbers coming through that are quite, um, earth-shattering. But yes, the, the square footage is now, um, of a typical, uh, residence has probably increased 1,500 to 2,000 square feet.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Leanne, followed by Carol Anne.
Thank you for my two minutes to share with you my concerns as a resident. I and others speaking today continue to live in the hope that we can say something that will touch your heart and cause a change in the direction you're taking this city. Um, as you know, I'm, um, I'm a president of the Flagler Village Civic Association, so I'm not directly impacted by Bahia Mar. But many of our residents do provide services during the boat show, so it's very important to, um, the people that I live, my neighbors. Um, I really, really respectfully ask the commission to prioritize legitimate needs of the residents to maintain and improve their quality of life over the desires of a few developers to maximize their personal profits. I believe you're setting a dangerous precedent when you give away the use of public land that was acquired explicitly for the benefit of the public. Bahia Mar was given to the city for safekeeping by taxpayers during a time of tremendous personal sacrifice during, right after World War II. We ask that you reexamine your primary duty of stewardship of this precious asset in your care so that it can be retained for the public good. We ask that you honor the spirit and intention of the city charter that was designed to limit the authority of elected officials and city staff with respect to leasing and disposal of public land. Please prioritize engaging with us, spending time with members of the public to find solutions to our much more important problems of housing, healthcare, education, and climate change versus spending countless hours in meetings with developers doing deals that do not benefit the public at large. As you may or may not know, our neighbors are being forced into their cars and under the streets due to out-of-site housing costs. When it rains, the flooding in our neighborhood streets makes walking to the grocery store or laundromat impossible. Our residents are without proper healthcare. Our youth are despairing of their future. Please engage with us on these critical matters. And the question for today is what direction you're to give to staff? And that we're asking you that they, that you take a pause, that you stop for the time being, that you get the answers to the questions that have been raised here before moving forward, especially with respect to the boat show. And that you really engage extensive public outreach. It's not just, you know, us talking to you, but that we actually have a dialogue back and forth. That's what we're really looking for. And when it happens, it's terrific, but we just get such little bits of time for that. So thank you very much.
Leanne, as a mayor...
Yeah, go ahead.
So I think the need for public outreach is critical on, on any big project, especially like this. But that's kind of what we're doing now, right? I mean, this is, we're having open meetings like this. We're discussing. We're, I'm sure we're all going to HOA meetings, talking about it. So, I mean, I think we're, we're doing that right now. What, do you feel like we're doing that right now, or what, I'm missing what else you think we should be doing?
I think it's, it's a lot of back, it's a lot of one-way conversations, like asynchronous conversations. So we make a point, and there's a point brought back, but there's never really a meeting of the minds. You know, why do you feel that way? Have, is there a clear discussion? And I think that, that has to happen through dialogue. And right now, we're just kind of talking at each other.
Okay.
I don't know how you achieve that and what the structure of the, you know, the formats that we have. But I think you could, you know, there's been some really important, uh, technical issues raised here. That's not my, you know, that's not my purview on this project. But I just think that, that it would benefit the city if we really addressed some of these issues. And, you know, the, the gentleman from the hotel had some great comments too. But, you know, we need to have that whole dialogue. We need to have everybody having that discussion together.
Well, just to intervene here for a second. Um, uh, now, there is a group called Lauderdale Tomorrow, and I know you've been on one of those calls. And, uh, you know, I attended and was a speaker at one of those meetings in which there was tremendous amount of back and forth. And I know Commissioner Glassman has also been involved in meetings with Lauderdale Tomorrow and has also reached out to other neighborhood groups in his district. Um, so I agree with you that that's the process. But I also have to point out that we have been engaged in that process and that this alone has not been the only forum in which a dialogue has taken place. And at the same time, I have, um, separately met with the developers and, uh, and, uh, met with, uh, individual, individuals who are leaders in neighborhood groups. And so over these many, many weeks and months, a lot of that has been going on. So I want you to be rest assured that we are doing what you're saying. And, uh, but I also want to point out one other thing. Um, yes, we should be talking about resiliency and education, healthcare, and all of that. But unfortunately, the city of Fort Lauderdale does not have, uh, the resources to build hospitals and does not engage in, um, uh, in, in, in school activities other than what we have been doing. We, we have a school resource officer, which has been, uh, extremely aggressive at working with the schools and the school board and trying to participate in, in after-school programs, creating... The city spends, uh, millions of dollars in building city parks, excuse me, parks that the city pays for on school grounds. So I really think we've been doing that. I think the best thing that we can do right now is to seek an economic engine, which I believe the Bahia Mar and the yachting and marine industry is all about. If you create an economic engine, you give people jobs. You give people jobs, they can pay for a roof over their head and food on their table. And I, and I think that's kind of the goal that we're seeking here. How do we best create and, and perpetuate that economic engine here in our city? And, and I kind of think that's our mandate here. So yes, I think all those goals are, 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 um, are things that we should strive to achieve. Uh, and we do in sort of, uh, in, in ways that are probably not always visible. But I think in the end, the city, um, is working very aggressively to achieving the goals that you, that you set out today for us to, to look at. So, so we're with you.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I, if I might just add also?
Yeah.
Because I, I want to talk about process, because I hear what you're saying, Leanne. But a, as Commissioner Saranzen just said, and also as the mayor, um, if we do give a consensus opinion today to the city attorney to move forward with whether it's a ground lease, uh, any other documents, that's not the end of the day. Because then, correct me if I'm... correct me if I'm wrong, Alan, but then that has to come back to us for a vote, and that's a whole nother round of public hearings and public input, discussion amongst the commission. So that, again, sets it off into a whole nother realm, and then if that moves forward, then this actual site plan that right now is just conceptual, that goes through an entire new process again. DRC, planning and zoning, city commission, and each of those meetings are public, each of them have public input, there'll be public participation, there'll be the applicant, the developer going to the neighborhoods, talking about the site plan, talking about the terms, all of that. So correct me if I'm wrong, Alan, this is really just almost the very beginning of what will be a very extensive process after, which will entail a great deal of public input.
Correct. You'd have, I mean, we would be basically putting pen to paper and putting the consensus on paper for you all to review, and then it would go through a series. Everything would have to be approved by the commission, which involves public meetings and the like.
Can I...
Right, and if Alan comes back to us with documents for our approval and we're not happy, we have the option to tweak them, we have the option to amend them, and that'll all be done also with public input as well.
Can I just make one comment? I think there were about 30 people on a call for two hours, that's 60 hours of thought that was given to an alternative proposal. And, you know, Mary and the rest of the team did a marvelous job of putting together a proposal for you all, and that was sent out, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago. And that's an example of something that needs to be brought up and talked about, whether you, you know, I think I heard from you at one of the pre-agenda calls that you didn't really like the idea, but, and that's great, but let's talk about it. You know, maybe it's a good alternative, but there isn't, there doesn't seem to be a forum to take all that mind power of the individuals that gave up their Sunday afternoon to really give some thought for an alternative proposal. Because, you know, none of us want to see Bahia Mar be a, you know, a down-in-the-dumps kind of location either, but we want to try to find something that will be the best public good, so.
Right, and I think that's why we are where we are now, because this commission, I know in particular, I was at all those late-night meetings years ago when the site plan that's now approved and in place was approved by the former commission. I vehemently opposed it for many reasons, and that's why we did roll up our sleeves and get involved in making sure that we were not going to be living with that particular site plan. And that's why right now, speaking of public land for public purpose, I believe, and I might be corrected later on by someone, but I believe now we're looking at a peninsula with over 90% of the land open for public purpose. So that's a big improvement, in my opinion, from what we are sitting at now facing as an approved site plan. So again, there are so many other issues, and always, I'm always available to come and discuss, but there's going to be a lot more public discussion. Thank you.
Leanne, what's the alternative proposal you speak of? What is that, just very quickly?
It was a, it was...
We were emailed that it's bifurcating the land and perhaps the city looking at keeping the western portion and just letting the developer build the hotel project on the eastern portion, and it's in a detailed letter that we received.
Great. Hello.
Well, I don't want you to read it, but it has to do with selling off part of the land directly to the developer and then with the area in which the condominiums would be built, and then retaining the balance of it, which is where the boat show, which is where the boat show is proposed to be sited, and that way, the city would retain direct relationship with the boat show, and the developer would have the real estate to build the condominiums. That's essentially in a nutshell.
Great. Yeah, great. Thank you. I think I've read that, and we can, I don't know where you went, but that's, we can happily talk about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and this is a great forum to do it, so.
Carol Anne, followed by Maxine Streeter, followed by Nancy Thomas.
Good afternoon, everybody. Carol Anne Mazep-Artholomew. I've lived in Fort Lauderdale since, gosh, 2000, I guess. Anyway, I've written to you many times. I am opposed to condominiums on our public land. I'm opposed to the extension of the lease, and I think it's really interesting hearing some of these comments that are coming from the dais. I think the economic engine for our city is not private condominiums on our public land. Obviously, the economic engine is something like the boat show that gets $6.3 million in rent for the developer for three weeks. I mean, if we think about the number of events that we could have, Tortuga-like festivals, maybe we could free up our beach parking lot, which has been tied up for a month and a half, and we started renting out this valuable property for those kinds of events, I think that's why people come to Fort Lauderdale. They don't come to Fort Lauderdale for private condominiums. Maybe the government is not in the business of making money, but surely we can do better than what's being offered, what currently exists, definitely, what's being offered. This is obviously very valuable property. The developer recognizes that. We all recognize it. You guys have the ball in your court. Please don't let us be duped. I think we've been duped for long enough. The city has the opportunity to really utilize this property, protect it, preserve it for all of us. So just let's stop, because bad decisions are made when there's not enough information or when the amount of information isn't sufficient. We don't need to make this decision quickly. I do think we need to incorporate more of these type of workshops. It occurred to me as you were asking what more can be done. Maybe there's a commission of the real estate industry, the development industry, restaurants, the public. Maybe we all sit down and have meetings about that and come up with a proposal. There's a lot on the table, there are a lot of opportunities, and we don't have to rush to make this decision. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Carol, let me just, can I ask a question? So in my view, stopping's not a good option.
Well, I really mean pause. I just mean pause. I don't mean stop right now, but, you know, this is, and, you know, this is one of the things, and I, excuse me for interrupting.
Yeah.
It just seems to me, over and over, that these kind of meetings, this important decisions that have to be made are done during the, you know, this is just the end of the Thanksgiving holiday. People are traveling. Last year, nobody got to travel. People were going crazy to travel this year. There are probably a lot of people who are still out of town. Now we're going to make a decision during the Christmas holidays. Really? Why do we need to do that? Why can't we just do it when more people are back in town? It just seems to me, I don't have any evidence that that's the case, that more people will participate in January, but it just seems to me that it just doesn't pass the smell test to me. You know, why do we have to do this the weekend of Thanksgiving or right in the middle of the Christmas holidays? It's just something to consider. I think we could pause. I'm not saying stop. Nobody wants this property to stay the way it is. It's a big, black parking lot, not very attractive. The hotel needs a lot of work. I think that's the responsibility of the developer. Why haven't they done anything to, you know, pretty up the property? There's a lot that can be done between what's being proposed and what exists now, and I just think we don't know all of the options.
Well, so, yeah, I mean, and I know you're not asking for it, but I don't even think pausing makes a lot of sense, but I do think making fully informed decisions with all the relevant data is what we need to be doing.
Yes.
And in my view, if that means we need, you know, a little bit more time to do that, then so be it, but, and so I think that's what you're saying, but just stopping because this is a, you know, a lot of folks are out of town, for me, doesn't make sense, because the city, the business of the city needs to continue.
I agree.
So we just need to make sure we have fully informed decisions, and once we have all the information, then I think we need to keep moving, if that's fair.
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Maxine, how are you? Nancy Thomas, followed by Janet Scraper.
Hi, Maxine.
Hi. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Maxine Streeter. I've been a litigator for the last 30 years here in Fort Lauderdale. I was born here, my mother was born here, we have deep roots in this community. Most recently, I was involved with the Bonnet House and getting the deed back to the citizens of the city of Fort Lauderdale for the residents. And Mr. Sorensen, you made a really good point. You just said that we need to make a fully informed decision with all relevant data, and that is very important. We're here today on the issue with Bahia Mar because it's been presented to the commission, the boat show, and the public as sort of a Hobson's choice, and I don't think that that's fair. It's either approve this new site plan and extend the lease, or go back to the 27 site plan and extend the lease. But that's not accurate. There's a prohibition in the city charter that prohibits you from extending that lease, and I'm going to read it to you, because one of the things that I do is go back to see where the power is and what you can and cannot do. And if you look at section 8.06, which is titled leases at Bahia Mar, it says specifically, leases for city property known as Bahia Mar may be negotiated by the city commission without the necessity of public bids, provided, however, that no such lease shall be for an initial term longer than 50 years. Okay? Here's the critical point. Extensions of or amendments to such leases may likewise be negotiated without necessity of public bid, provided, however, that no such extension or amendment shall be for an additional term longer than 50 years beyond the original termination date of the lease which is to be extended or amended. Right now, this developer is, has already in the second part of the 50 years on this lease. So this lease cannot, I don't think that you have the power to extend this lease, and if the developer wants to build the old, build either site plan on what they've got now, they can do it with 41 years left, I guess, if they want to go forward and do it, they can do it. But Mr. Mayor, you said something important. You said that doing nothing is not an option. You have the power. You're the landlord. Enforce the lease, okay? I mean, it's supposed to be a world-class marina and destination resort. It's not supposed to be condominiums. So enforce the lease. We just hired a diversity officer and a cultural, or you approved the city manager to hire a diversity officer and a cultural officer. Get somebody to manage this lease and make sure that this, that this developer is adhering to all of these terms.
Well, Maxine, but keep in mind that this commission, the previous commission, approved a site plan development.
Yeah, I understand that. They approved it, but that doesn't, they approved, they approved that, but you can't extend the lease. That's the point.
Well, can the city attorney weigh in on all the stuff that Ms. Streeter brought up?
We're not extending the lease. It would be a new lease.
A brand-new lease. Well, I think under a brand-new lease, under the charter, that you have to put things out for bid.
That's incorrect.
Okay.
What'd you say, Alan?
That's incorrect. Thank you.
Can you cite me the provision of the city charter that says that you can do it without a bid?
The same provision you just read.
It doesn't say that right there, Alan.
It doesn't say that the new lessee has to be somebody different than the current lessee either.
Okay, so you're relying on 8.06 that doesn't, that, what is the, can you tell me specifically? Because I just read the whole section.
Yeah, read it again. If you go ahead, you have 50 and 50, right? If it's a new lease, you get another 50 and 50. It's not that we go ahead and lease this property for 100 years and then we're done.
Okay.
Nothing in there indicates that the new lessee has to be anybody different than the current one. So we're not extending the current lease. It would be a brand-new lease, starting a new 50.
Okay, so how does that work with the site plan? If a site plan was approved under a lease that's no longer valid, don't they have to come back with a brand-new site plan?
Nope.
Where does that say that?
It doesn't in the charter. That's precisely why.
Okay, then maybe the courts decide. Okay.
Wait, to her point, though, let's say we create a new lease based on a new site plan. Is there any obligation for the city to extend it another 50 years, or is there a requirement that after the first 50, we have to put it out to bid?
No.
No what?
No and no?
No and no.
Okay.
Not with the site plan. I mean, the site plan could be sold tomorrow, so their site plan's approved regardless of who the lessee is.
Right, but I mean, if we wanted to, let's say we did a 50-year lease with a new site plan, all right, to get a second 50 years, does it have to go out to bid?
No.
Does not? Okay.
Respectfully, I believe that he's wrong, but we can always do that later. All righty. Thank you.
My two previous predecessors had the same opinion as well.
Okay, thank you. Nancy Thomas, followed by Janet Scraper, followed by Ann Hilmer.
Good afternoon.
Hi, Nancy.
We all know very well how important the boat show is to this city. In the span of just one month, including setup and breakdown, it injects hundreds of millions of dollars into the local economy, provides jobs, and spotlights our city as the Venice of America, and this happens in one month, just one out of 12. It was great to hear Phil Purcell report how successful the 2021 Boat Show turned out to be with record revenue and attendance. We know how viable this boat show is now and in the future. We also know that Bahia Mar site is crucial to the boat show's annual success. It's got a tremendously unique position, setting, close to the airport, hotel, beaches, it can't be matched. So for these critical economic reasons, the boat show should get what the boat show wants and needs to succeed at Bahia Mar. Don't limit the space or the control, don't limit the space or the control that they want. In fact, why not give them more space? Doing so will contribute to even greater boat show revenues, and city residents and tourists will get to enjoy expanded public space the rest of the year. Don't cram it with buildings and restricted residential areas. Ensure that the docks are convenient, safe, and accessible, which is questionable in the proposal we see. Make Bahia Mar visible, welcoming, pleasant, and comfortable to city residents and tourists during the boat show and year-round. The city's faced right now with critical choices for the future of this is publicly-owned property. Let's err on the side of proven success. Boat show ownership does not want to deal with condominium owners in any form, wants to contract with the city rather than the tenant, and wants even more space and flexibility to put on even bigger and better shows in the future. It's money in the bank. To me, it's a no-brainer, and it's completely achievable. So let's go with the show. As we've all said today, we're, you're supposed to give direction to staff, there are questions that at least the public wants answered. I'm not saying we're going to stop for six months, but dialogue is important, and I'm sorry, this setting, even having you guys as guests and Commissioner Morades, is helpful, but there's very little public discord, that some of the answers and questions you're asking today, outside of two minutes, are very helpful. I hope you find it helpful. And, you know, we're always just shoved into two, rarely three anymore, minutes in the middle of an afternoon after a holiday. A lot of people are missing work, you know, we all have things we have to be doing. So dialogue is important, and I don't think we're achieving that. But you got to resolve crucial boat show concerns, conduct more extensive public outreach, and that can be defined in different ways. And then let's talk about direction. So thank you very much. I think I was one of the people yesterday, I missed the Steelers making the worst game that they've had in a long time, which was actually, you know, not a bad thing, because we were spending all afternoon dissecting this problem. And believe me, this group, and individually, we do not want Bahia Mar to sink into the ground, but there are ways to resolve these differences, and it's not just us. I don't know one person I've spoken to about the beach in Bahia Mar who said, oh, yeah, that sounds great. It's, most people are appalled, because we don't want to, we don't want to risk the boat show, and we don't want Fort Lauderdale to look like Miami Beach. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Nancy, if I can, what are, what questions do you think are still to be answered, do you think specifically? What, in your mind?
Well, the whole issue of condos, pardon me, I mean, clearly 10 days ago, the boat show was not in favor of that, and a few months ago, three commissioners were not in favor of that. To me, the crux of the issue is twofold. It's public property. You can build whatever you, you know, you can build within reason or guidance, ordinance on private property, but this is public property, and we're not getting any more of it, as Mary says. So that's very important. The other thing is the boat show. I see no reason for them to have to reduce their revenue, because they're not getting as much space, and I, they have the details, I don't. But I was shocked to hear that 10 days ago, and that's very important. They're too kind of, they're related in that the Boat Show stated they don't want to have to deal with condo associations. And as the public who owns the property, a lot of people don't like that idea. So, you know, density and so on, the site plan itself, I think it's still overdone for publicly-only and for what the intent was originally in 1945. It's still too commercial. And, you know, it's tenants, if I was a developer, I'd probably be asking for the same thing. But I don't agree that it's necessary and not on public land. And by the way, I think Mary Furtick should get a chance to speak at the end also.
She should have what?
Have a chance to speak at the end also. You're giving it to the tenants and the Boat Show, but Mary has just been indefatigable about leading us and listening to people, including all of you.
Right, well, that's why we did not, that's why we did not limit you or her at, at two minutes. Let both of you speak as long as you want.
I under, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
I'm looking at the clock.
I turned off the clock.
Any minute, any second now.
I turned off the clock.
Yeah.
But let me just say this, Nancy. I listened to that same argument at 2:00 in the morning on December 15, 2017.
So did I.
Right? And you and I were there, and we lost, right? So we're not dealing with a blank slate here today.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So while your, while your wishes are, are well-founded, we have to understand the position that the city is in right now. And we're doing our best to, to create a better solution from what we, what we're handed.
I understand we're not, we're not starting from scratch. I understand where, where the city stands now, but condos were not on the table then. Private ownership of public land was not on the table in 2017, nor did we have access to Boat Show concerns.
Yes, we did have, we had, we had Boat Show concerns. And as, as a commissioner back then for District 2, I argued that the current site plan completely displaced the entire Boat Show. And it was, my argument was ignored. So please keep that in mind, that we are now able to actually extricate significant amount of real estate in addition to what we currently have on the site plan for use and benefit of the Boat Show. So trust me, we're doing our best. We, we hear you. I heard Mary. I hear you. This commission is very sensitive to, to those concerns. We're doing our best to come up with a compromise that works for as many, as many of the interests as possible. So we hear you. Thank you.
And Mayor, I, I want to also address something, Nancy, because I want to make sure that we're not confusing a clean slate now of just a hotel and very little else on this peninsula with regards to space for the Boat Show. Because what the mayor was just talking about, yes, I was there that night also, and we did lose. And so, but we learned something at that time. We learned that we need to make sure that we continue the fight and not have that site plan happen. Now, part of it is already moving forward with the Marina Village, although I think it's going to be a beautiful beginning of that site plan on the southern end with the restaurants, and the public's going to absolutely enjoy that space. But then on the northern end, I always objected to a large building there. That could happen now, any day, if, if we just don't move forward. But I want you to understand something. There's a misconception out there about space for the Boat Show, because the Boat Show, correct me if I'm wrong later when everyone speaks at the end, but in 2017, a lease agreement was done between the Boat Show and the tenant. And right now, we're looking at a vastly improved amount of space, significantly improved amount of space for the Boat Show over the 2017 lease that the Boat Show entered into with the developer. So that's, it's always a concern of mine, because I was never pleased, and when I first met with both parties together, I said, I want to hear what the Boat Show needs. We need to make sure the Boat Show has what it needs. And I thought that based on the discussions of the 2017 agreement, and based on what we had come to, that we had seen a significant improvement in the climate-controlled space, the tent space, the access to the peninsula, you name it, up and down the line, what we're looking at now in negotiations that have gotten us to this point today are head and shoulders above what the Boat Show, what the Boat Show agreed to in 2017 in terms of their needs. So it's hard for me to see why this is not good, because it's just night and day. And I can go through all the details when I go through that lease and I look at it in terms of, you know, all of the area. And I believe the hotel, we've even gotten the hotel to move to the south to make more access on the northern end. There's nothing impeding even the access on the outer perimeter of the peninsula, because the buildings are raised up to 45 feet. You have 45 feet. You can do tents, you can do anything all the way around. So I don't buy-
Well, we're going in the right direction. And, but in May, when three commissioners said no condos, when, when the tenant came back and said, we want to have condos, then three people said no. Three of you people said no. And then, then you kind of reversed yourselves as of July. And since then, the Boat Show 10 days ago said, well, we don't have as much spaces, we'll have less space than this year. So I'm not saying, you know, nothing's happened since 2017. None of us is saying that. What we're saying is, with the information we have now, there is, there is concern about selling, having private ownership, ownership of public land, and clarify where the Boat Show stands now on what the site plan looks like now. I appreciate it's been scaled back and everything. I'm just saying, so I'm not ignoring that. I'm just saying that the condo issue and the Boat Show, what they said is what, you know, I'm reacting to.
So let's have that quick discussion. I did say that I opposed the condos because, but I want to put this into context. When I said that, I had gotten a hold of what had been worked on. If you remember, there was a big bruhaha, because many of us were not privy to some of the work that had occurred between the developer and the city attorney's office. We had not seen a lot of that. So when I read that later on, those were condo structures, that, that's why I said I was against that, because that condo structure was a structure that just wasn't going to work for me. So immediately, I said to myself, okay, if I'm going to negotiate and I'm going to get to the point where I'm going to say okay to condos, it had to be a totally different condo structure. And I will tell you that I will take, I'll take 350 condos plus 60 in the hotel any day over 651 rental apartments. Because at the end of the day, when the public is walking around the peninsula, I think they would rather see some buildings that have 350 apartments as opposed to 651 apartments. Because at the end of the day, to me, public land for public purpose means that the public, the public gets to enjoy and use the land. And that's exactly what we've been negotiating for here, where the public is going to get and use the land. The average person walking around that peninsula, let's say this is all built and it's done, they're not going to look up and say, oh, wow, are those condos, co-ops, rentals, timeshares? They're not going to care. If they are enjoying the land, which is something they've never done in 50, 60 years, if they finally get to enjoy the land and to sit in a park space in an open space on the western part of the peninsula and look at the marina and look at the boats, or enjoy the restaurants, or take a class, or have a cup of coffee, or just sit down and do nothing, all of that, all of that is so much better than what they've experienced for the last 60 years on that peninsula. And that's, that's how I feel. So my position on the condos again changed because drastically, and you've heard me ask the city attorney, are we going to have protection? Are we going to have protection in the groundings? Are we going to have protection in the master lease? The master declaration? All of the agreements that are going to be signed off on by every purchaser of every condo? Is it going to be made really clear to them? Is it going to be ironclad that they cannot one day upon turnover from the developer, when they take over their association? Is it going to be ironclad that they cannot, cannot interfere with the operation of the Boat Show? My city attorney keeps telling me yes. Everybody else keeps telling me yes. So that's the language that I need to see when this comes back to us. I want to make sure that that language is ironclad, that the Boat Show is protected, because we all agree on how important that is for us to have that Boat Show successful. But I do believe that we're getting to that point now. And again, that's the language that I will look for when it comes back to us. But that's why my position has changed on condominiums, because I am very aware of all the different condo structures out there. And to me, if this is all under the umbrella of the branded residences and all under the umbrella of a five-star resort, then so be it, because then I know that they will control the management of the condominiums. And by the way, I also want you to know that when I read back all of the old documents with regards to this land, it is very clear that the western portion of A1A was always meant to be an economic driver for the city. It was not meant to be anything else. That language is there. It is supposed to be the economic driver. So we're basically coming to a point where we're going to have the best of both worlds, because it's going to be an economic driver. I've heard Dan Texera tell me that we really shouldn't be looking, as the developer told us, between 1,000 and 1,500 a square feet. We should be looking at 2,000 a square feet and up. That means that the 1.72 million that we get now from the boat, from the tenant on this site, 1.72 million a year, should conceivably climb to about 13 to 15 million dollars a year. That's nothing to laugh at. That will pay for a lot of the services that Leanne is concerned about, to help our citizens, to create more programs, more services. So that's nothing to laugh at, nothing to sneeze at, because I think that that will go a long way in helping us. And at the same time, we're opening up the space dramatically over what we have now on a site plan that's been approved. And to me, that's a win-win. Does everyone get 100% of what they want? Absolutely not. But that's what negotiations are all about, because both sides have to come to a middle, and I think that's where we're headed now. That's all.
Well, I, I'm anxious to hear what the Boat Show has to say.
Me too.
Because my point, the first thing that occurred to me today in terms of speaking was, the Boat Show should not be short-changed in any way, shape, or form.
Absolutely not. You're, you're 100% right.
And the condo issue is legally, I, I hear what you're saying. I, I'm not sure. I, I still don't agree with it. And I, I just want everybody to remind, remember, this is publicly-owned property.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And much of our public land has buildings on it.
All right.
And all through the country.
All right, let's move on. Let's move on. Janet, thank you for your patience, followed by Ann Hilmer, followed by Mr. Lockery.
Okay. I, I have a whole thing planned. I want to talk about process now, but let me just tell you. So we spent three hours discussing, for the fifth time yesterday, my new tie. I spent hours today trying to come up with a two-minute thing to say that said anything at all, because in two minutes, you can't say squat and everybody knows it. You know, you can't make any kind of reasonable argument for anything in two minutes. I did three pretty quick on the first, but two, that was another thing. So then, this is the thing. You talk about, everybody's talking about process. That's my thing, and I, I'm just really upset. So the last time we had a process that we had public input, it was very clear that the public felt no condos on public land, no private ownership on public land. That was very clear. No 100-year lease to accommodate those private condos, and that the Boat Show was the number-one priority. That was in the March meeting. And as a result of that, three of you said, okay, I agree, no condos on public land. So we go, great, that's done. But then, all of a sudden, in July, we have a meeting where condos are presented and, and we're going forward. And it's like, wait a minute, what the hell happened here? Last time we heard anything, or there was any place for anybody to talk, it was not, not going to be condos. And so now, today, you want, and the reason we're saying pause or stop is because what you want to do today, from what you're saying, is direct the staff to come up with a lease that includes condos on private land, that has a 100-year lease, and that the Boat Show, we could, that's a whole nother thing. I mean, I have, we, we have much more say than we've been able to say in two minutes. It just, it dumb, it dumbs down the conversation. But anyway, so you say, that's what it sounds like you want to give the staff direction to do. Well, then that's a, then we're done. Because even though the site plan hasn't been, I mean, this is on a site plan that hasn't even been approved, you know, by the way, you're, you're giving away the horse before you, I mean, it's just incredible. So what if we, you know, nitpick at the site plan next year? The public input is over the minute you decide to tell the staff to work on a lease with condos and, and 100-year lease. And the Boat Show is not a priority, and that's a whole nother conversation. But what I'm saying is, you're saying that we have public outreach or input. Two minutes on a topic this, this complex and that has this much work, has got people, I have sent letters, I mean, you know, obviously, everybody doesn't read the letters or the attachments or anything. I don't know why we waste so much of our time trying to raise serious questions, trying to bring up issues, and we get treated like we're getting, what, what was it McKenzie said last time? Ambushed by the public, because you don't like, you know, us to interfere in your thing. And then the developers who get to lobby with you all the time and get the last say, like at a jury trial, where, you know, the last one gets to bring their point home. I mean, I'm just flabbergasted that you actually think that this process has been including public participation, because it has been nothing like public participation. And if today, you decide that you're going to direct the staff to do a lease with the condos on it in 100 years, then, you know, that's giving away the, the whole game. So I don't know where you think-
Janet, let me ask you this. What other, what other manner would you suggest public participation take place? I just was curious.
Well, you know, something in between three commissioners say no condos on the land and directing the staff to do a lease with 100 years and condos might have been something. I mean, there was nothing in between that one day.
What, what, wait, what process? Because nothing, nothing's-
How about a workshop where we, I mean, some kind of-
That's what this is.
Well, this isn't a workshop.
Well, it is a workshop. We'll say it isn't. It is a workshop.
That's what you call it. But I'm, okay, maybe, what's another, focus groups or something? Something where there's interaction.
You're probably, Janet, you're probably thinking about a charrette, maybe? Is what you're talking about? Where you brainstorm ideas? Maybe that's what she's talking about, Mayor.
I don't know that, I mean, actually, you know, quite frankly, I personally would like that, because you know what we could do on that property?
Well, Lauderdale Tomorrow meetings are kind of like a focus group.
I know, and we spent three hours coming up with stuff that we have to kind of compress into two minutes.
Well, you haven't taken two minutes. I've given you multiple minutes.
I know, and I didn't even say one thing, because my problem here today is that you guys think you're having process, and I, we don't.
You know, I, I respect process, but I think that your target is mis, misdirected. I think that you should have focused on substance instead of trying to condemn the process. Our hands are-
I'm not condemning it.
Our hands are, are tied when it comes to the format. We have to do every, we cannot talk to each other outside of meetings.
I realize that we can have a focus-
We, we have to engage the public in this, in this manner. We can go to our respective constituencies and talk to them, but we're not allowed to pass messages amongst one another. You know, there's a, there's a certain formality that we have to respect, and I think that this commission has, has reached out, from what I understand, Commissioner Glassman, Commissioner Sorenson has, has, have both gone to Lauderdale Tomorrow meetings, have spoken with their neighborhood associations. I don't know what other process you're talking about. I think we're being very fair. We may not all agree, but just because you don't agree doesn't mean we've been not following correct process.
There's no conversation, though, Mayor.
Yeah.
It's like, you tell us one thing, we tell you this, you tell us one thing, we tell you that. There's no, there's no ability for, for people to, you know, really sit around and argue. I mean, there's been 50 times today when you guys have made comments from up, from up here that I thought needed a comment, but you know, we can't. It's like the one person can react to what you say, and there might be five people out there that actually know the real answer and have the right info. But they don't get to talk again.
Janet, you have my cell number. I've never, I never not answer my phone, and I never not call people back if, if a message is left. If there is something out there, anybody out there who has a question or has an issue to debate and wants to discuss it, I know that every single member of this commission practices the same thing. I know that Ben Sorenson, Steve Glassman, Commissioner McKenzie, and the Vice Mayor all have open ears to everybody who wants to discuss an issue. And I, I feel hurt that you even would say that, because I know that-
I feel hurt, too.
-we do our best as public servants to listen to the public. I really do. I feel very hurt that you would say that.
But Janet, I also, Janet, I, I also feel bad that you feel that way, actually, about process and about people talking and listening, because just to echo what the mayor said, I take appointments from anyone who ever asks for an appointment. I spend hours on the phone with people that call me and we discuss this. the phone with people that call me, and we discuss this. So, I do feel that we engage, we engage all the time. I mean, anyone wants a meeting, we have a meeting. Anybody wants me to come to an association meeting, I go to an association meeting. I never say no. I never, as the mayor just said, I, I never not pick up the phone. I never return a phone call. I always return a phone call, and sometimes I've been on the phone for an hour, two hours, with somebody discussing all of the different intricacies, intricacies of a project. So, I, I, I do want to echo what the mayor said, because I, I do think, you know, it's hard, because I think the mayor hit on something. Sometimes we get upset, obviously, if we're not just getting the answers that we want to get. So, then, that creates a whole nother dynamic between people.
I get it, but the thing was, that the last time the public spoke, it was very clear what the priorities were, and the commission seemed to understand that. And then the next time we get to speak, you're going to direct the staff to do the complete opposite of what you said for us to do.
How do you know what we're going to direct?
You don't know that. Can I make a comment, Mayor?
I mean, that's what you're here to decide today.
But how do you know what we're going to say? I don't even know what I'm...
Yeah, this could be just a conversation, Janet.
That's what it sounded like from what everybody said.
Yeah, please.
Jan, uh, you, you, you inserted me in your presentation with the ambush statement.
Yeah.
And when we started this process, this is my eighth year dealing with this, and, um, I've seen many renditions of what we wanted on the property. Me, I would have gone with the Twin Towers, however many years ago that was. I mean, just the front of the property, and would have had access to everything else.
Process.
However, however, let me finish. When we got to the final leg this time, we decided to let the district commissioner get with the community, get with the developers, get with the boat show, iron it out and bring it to us, because of the reasons the mayor just spoke of. Also, we gave a consensus so that America can do it as well. So, we have two sides of the story. The other three of us, we talked to people, we did what we could. No one bothered to call me. But I came back with the understanding that we all had agreed to something. And then when we got here last time, the ambush came. That's what my statement was about. It was not for you to, let me finish, let me finish. And you talk about us not reading emails. Well, you make it very easy for me, um, not to read the other 29 emails when it's all copied and pasted, because they all say the very same thing. I have always said, from day one here, that I do not return emails. I return phone calls. I'll meet you. Returning emails is a public record, and it can be taken out of context, so I don't make a practice of it. But you never called me.
No, because...
And but you used me as a part of your presentation. I think it's great that the mayor's allowing you, all of you, this time, to vent and talk. And we haven't decided what we're going to do. We wanted to have another public meeting today. Um, we wanted the boat show and, and, um, the developer to go back and talk about, you know, what it is they need to come to a compromise, so that we can have more information today to make an informed decision. And I'm going to sit patiently through this. I left the dais, because this air is blowing on my bald head, and I cough when I'm sitting here, so I go sit in the back of the room. No disrespect to anyone in this room, but it's uncomfortable for me. But you, hold on, you inserted me...
I did.
...in your presentation. I just wanted to answer that for you. At any time in the future, you want to have a conversation with me, please feel free to call my office, and we can do that.
Okay, thank you very much. I will do that. I just want, I do want to say a couple things that were on my list. First of all, you know, why, how this condo thing is considered an economic engine, I have no idea. I mean, if you built a world-class resort there, where it was no public, no private ownership, and it was a resort, and it had all these amenities, you know, like, like the little village is great, I love the village, and it had space for the boat show to grow, not just better than 2017, not just a little worse than last year, but room to grow and thrive. I mean, why aren't we looking at it from that perspective?
I'll tell you what, I'll tell you, the, the response to that is that, right now, the site plan provides precious little space for the boat show.
I'm not talking about the current site plan.
Listen to me. I'm, I'm reacting to your statement, which is, this is exactly what you said we didn't do, and now we're doing it. Okay, so just take a moment, and let's just, okay. So, the, the, the logic here is that by trying to work with the developer to find more space for the boat show, okay, to allow more land area to be available to the boat show, more than what currently is, has been, uh, approved by, by the city commission, all right, we have to make certain compromises, all right? I don't know what that compromise is going to be in the end. I don't know what the financial terms are going to be in the end, but we're in the process of discussing that, in order to shave off as much as 650-plus units that are currently approved, down to in the 300s. I think that's a significant change. Do you not agree?
They're condos.
They're units.
They're condos. They're private people.
What, how does that impact the boat show?
Well, I know you think you're going to find condominium rules that you can make meet your thing, but you know, a hundred years is a long time, and rules change, and laws change, and I don't think there's any guarantee that anything you might put down in paper today, that you think's going to protect the boat show from a condominium association is necessarily going to hold water for a hundred years.
Those buildings will not be there in a hundred years.
Well, we all know they're not going to be here. But why would you even want to saddle the city and the future commissioners?
The city is already saddled. Let's get that, let's, that horse has already left the barn.
If this project from 2017 was so great, they would have built it. So, there's a problem, okay? There's some kind of problem. They've had five years.
Right.
So, so we really, you know, do we really use that as leverage? Because it's obviously not going to work. So, they're coming up with other ideas. There's other ideas, like a resort. Why not a resort?
It's going to be a big resort.
No, it's going to be condominiums.
No, it, the condos are part of what I'm considering to be probably, and hoping to see, a four- or five-star resort. No, the condos are going to be, they're going to be, the condos are part of the branded residences managed by whatever that resort is. No, that's the whole deal. They're part of, and that's, that's a model now that's very, very successful around the country and the world, where a five-star resort will have condominium ownership within the five-star resort. That's just the model.
Some private land, private land. There's a big difference. You keep forgetting that these models are based on...
I know, but you're...
Right, but that footprint...
...forgetting that we already are saddled with a development.
But it, they're not building it.
What percentage is the footprint of the condos on the 39 acres? Probably a couple of percentage points of, of 100% of the property is the condo. The rest is public purpose, public land, public restaurants, open space.
The, the picture that they showed last time of how the boat show was going to be situated, went all around their buildings, including the entrance to their buildings, including the access to the fire, people on the roads. How, how do you think the condo people are going to like that?
They're buying knowing that this is going to take place on the site.
Yeah?
Subject to. That's how the, that's how the documents are being written.
Yeah, well, the first buyer might go along with that. I'm just saying, it's a lot more complicated, I think, than you guys are trying to make it out. And there's a lot more options than, than seem to be on the table.
But I want to hear them. Tell me the options.
Well, what, okay.
I'll tell you what. Call my office, and I'll be happy to sit with you for a whole...
So, the point of today...
I'll happy to be, sit with you for a whole hour.
Okay.
And bring as many people as you want, and I'll be happy to hear, tell me what those other options are.
Okay. So, the point of today's arguments, that people have said at the end of everything, that we wanted you to pause the lease negotiations, is because of the condos, because of the hundred-year lease, and the question on, you know, really, the, whether that, how exactly that'll work with the charter, and the question that the boat show has brought up, that they're not going to have room to grow. So, those...
Are you, are you part of the Lauderdale Tomorrow group?
Um, when I can be.
All right. Are you, are you in agreement with the, with the communique that they sent to us, recommending that we, that we sell part of the land to the developer, for them to build their condominiums, and then ask to retain the balance, uh, to the city? Are you in favor of that?
I would...
Selling, selling public land?
I don't, I am not 100% in agreement with that. However, I would probably prefer that to building condos on public land. I'd probably prefer to give them their land and let them, let us make the money off it. I don't know. That's a complex thing, and it's not really in my wheelhouse.
Well, we have to make a decision. That's the thing, Janet.
I know. But you don't have to, is what we're trying to say today. We're trying to say that there's too much out there. Stop, and, you don't have to tell the staff to work on a lease.
We're not telling the staff.
That's what, yeah, last time, that was what the thing was. The purpose of the meeting was to give staff direction on the lease. So, we're just assuming that that's the same thing today, except today, we just get public input, because that was, last time, that was what you were trying to do. Give staff...
Eventually, that will be the direction that we give.
So, all we're saying today is, please don't give them direction to work on a lease that's got condos and a hundred-year lease today. That's all we're saying.
And Janet, I just wanted to address the room-to-grow issue, because I've heard it a few times now. Please understand that Bahiamar is one of, correct me if my math is wrong, six venues that the boat show has during the boat show. Convention Center, Superyacht Village, La Solas Marina, Swimming Hall of Fame, um, Bahiamar, and I'm missing one, I think. But I think there are six venues. There's a lot of room to grow, and there's a lot of room. Where else are you going to go to a boat show and take a water taxi up and down an intercoastal waterway, and go to six venues where all of them are room to grow? And I don't know what the deal is between the boat show and all those venues, because I know we're just focusing on Bahiamar. I'd like to know what the deal is, actually, on all those, and maybe why they're not utilized as much. But there's a lot of potential there, especially with the La Solas Marina coming online in a year or two, um, Swimming Hall of Fame, and all the others that I just mentioned. But we have six venues to grow the boat show. That's pretty good, I think. It's, it's not just this one site. That's all.
Okay, anyway.
Two minutes are up.
Thank you so much for all the time.
Two minutes are up.
And I will take you all up on having a meeting and discussing further. Hopefully, there'll be something to discuss.
We welcome the opportunity, Janet. Trust me, my door is open. Anytime you want to bring a group, please let me know. Ann, thank you for your patience.
Um, Dean, don't start yet. I just have one thing to say. Um, excuse me if I'm a little bit rattled. My husband was in a car accident this morning, and I just want to commend the Fort Lauderdale Police Department for their quick response, and taking care of everything, and making sure everybody was safe. The EMS people, the only policeman I can remember's name is A. Dunn. Um, there were two other police officers there, and thank you very much for everything that you did.
Is he okay?
Yeah, he's okay, but it was not good. Um, the car's not okay. The car's da, gone.
Sorry to hear that.
Okay. So, in light of that, I'm just going to read what I have to say. Excuse me for not being...
Go ahead.
Um, my name is Ann Hillmer. I live at 621 Idlewild. Um, approximately 85% of our neighborhood belongs to the Idlewild Improvement Association. The vast majority of our neighborhood is opposed to this site plan and the 2017 plan. Many of the neighborhoods in, in, the households in our neighborhood, as in other neighborhoods, are supported by the marine industries. Idlewild strongly supports the marine industries in this discussion. Frank Herhold, one of our former neighbors, formerly of the marine industries, always kept us aware of how much open space is needed to remain for the boat show at Bahiamar. Several years ago, Mary Furtig and I negotiated with Blackstone, and walked away with a commitment from them to, quote, deed restrict on eight acres, we're talking upland, not 39 acres, because 39 acres, half of that is underwater, but to deed restrict an eight-acre portion on the west side of the peninsula, not to include tree wells, et cetera. Um, Steve, you just said a, a little while ago, please don't interrupt me, you just said a little while ago that this plan has 90% of land open for public use. Really? Um, a better site plan does not necessarily mean it's the right site plan for the boat show. Uh, where, I, I want to know, where are the documents saying that the western portion was intended for any kind of economic development? Although we are one of the closest neighborhoods, the tenant has not come to our association in years. Once you sign the lease, what is there left to discuss? As a member of the Idlewild Improvement Association and Lauderdale Tomorrow, I ask that you please remember that our first request is no 100-year lease and no condos on public land. The question today is what direction to give the staff. We ask you to direct the staff to stop for the time being, get the answers to the questions raised before moving forward, resolve the crucial boat show concerns, conduct extensive public outreach, then call another public workshop to provide direction. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions of Ann? Okay. Barry Summerstein, followed by Robert Lockery.
Actually, Mayor, I, I wouldn't dare think of interrupting Ann when she was talking, but I, she did ask me a question. So, I would refer her to the lease agreement from 1962. Under Article 24, it says, however, both parties heretofore being desirous of least see conducting its business in and upon the demise premises, so as to provide the greatest volume of business. And then it goes on and on and on, and it talks about it, um, in terms of an economic driver. So, that, that's one of the places, and there are others as well. Thanks.
Well, well, also just keep...
I would say, Steve, that you sound like you're, you're a salesperson for the development.
Well...
Well, can I just say this? Whatever that said originally, you know, that was...
You asked me a question of where I got that information, of where it's an economic driver, and it's supposed to be business development on that side, and I read it to you, and then you're still not happy with the answer, so I'm sorry.
Let me just say this. There are lots of things that were, that were probably part of documents 50, 60, 70 years ago, and, you know, Fort Lauderdale's a totally different place today, and, uh, things that were done back then, and things that we would do today, I, I imagine we have to evolve with the times and with, and with conditions as they change. Some people think that we should, you know, wait it out for 40-plus years and, and recreate a park there, uh, and other people feel that, you know, condominiums and new hotel and all kinds of economic activity is the best solution. So, um, we're hearing things from both sides of the spectrum, uh, both ends of the spectrum. So, I just want you to be aware that, uh, we're very sensitive to everyone's, uh, opinions, and, uh, and I appreciate pointing that out. But again, I, I hope we're not necessarily married to those things. I think we have the sense of ourselves as to what's best at this point in the history of our city, what's best for the community going forward. That's why people elected us, and, uh, and I think that working with the community, we can come up with the best solution. All right. Barry Summerstein, followed by Robert Lockery. Are you going to speak in?
I'm going to go in.
Shh. Oh, wow. Okay, Mr. Lockery speaks.
Sounds like I'm getting set up.
Right?
All right.
What more do you have to say, Mr. Lockery?
Well, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioner is Robert Lockery, on behalf of the tenant. Um, what I'd like to do is address some of the questions that have been raised today, as well as some of the issues that came up at the last meeting. Um, I do have a couple slides, I think, can describe some of the spaces that were talked about, um, and really to the public's intent. You know, one of the things that I know they're looking for is additional information, and certainly, we don't see any problem with sharing that information, getting that information out. Um, a lot more information has been provided to the public and to the commissioners, in the term of your backup, in terms of the actual lease between the tenant and the boat show. I don't have to get into all that detail. But I would like to describe, again, won't go through the whole presentation of all the changes, but would like to describe, again, a little bit more about the site, and specifically the spaces, because I know that is important to everybody. That's all right? So, can you all see this? Wow, that actually worked. I don't know how to close this, but we get the idea. Um, all right. So, this is the existing site. Um, you all are very familiar with it. Uh, we've talked about it. You've seen it. Um, it is basically, um, other than the hotel portions of the project and the marina, which is the most significant part. Let's not forget, the marina is over 50% of the property itself. But beyond the marina, which is arguably the most important, and the hotel operations, it's a big surface parking lot. Um, of that, of the entire site, it's important to recognize the specific numbers that are involved. As I said, over 50% is made up of the marina area, which is 22.68 acres. Um, the upland portion is 15.96 acres. That represents 41% of the site. So, 58.7% of the site is marina, will continue to be marina under this lease, and 41.3% of the site is the upland area. Now, this is the approved project that we've all talked about, that you are all very familiar, that was approved by a prior city commission. It was also approved before it came to the city commission by the Fort Lauderdale Boat Show, as you all now know, through the lease agreement that's attached to your backup. Um, those discussions and that negotiation happened at the request of the city commission then, before the applicant could even make a submittal to the city of Fort Lauderdale. Um, as those of you who are around...
Mr. Lockery, there's a certain myth involved with that.
Okay.
Weren't they contractually obligated to support the site plan as submitted?
There's certainly nothing in the lease that suggests that at all. Mayor, if, if we go back a step on that, in that regard, there was currently already an agreement between the boat show and, of course, um, the tenant.
It was only another three years.
That's correct. And so, at four years, is what I'm hearing. So, at the time that, subsequent to beginning the process, um, Informa, the corporation Informa, bought the boat show. The newspaper reported it was about a... The newspaper reported about a hundred-and-thirty-three million dollars that they paid the local owners of the boat show, bought the boat show. Subsequently, we came in front of the commission. The commission decided that before we could proceed with the city's approval on even signing the application, a deal had to be worked out with the boat show. And the parties got together and worked out a deal. And so that occurred first, then the site plan came into the city commission and was ultimately approved. In fact, the boat show did appear at those meetings and did speak in favor of the site plan. And the boat show agreement I saw did not see any, there was no mention of a requirement to speak in favor.
So, Robert, that's very important what you just said because, again, it's not what a lot of people understand to be the order of what happened in 2017.
Okay.
So the city commission said before they were going to even approve a site plan that the boat show and the tenant had to go back and come up with an agreed-upon lease in terms of how the boat show would operate at Bahiamar?
Actually, we weren't, one of the issues was because it's city-owned land, in order to file the application to begin the process, the commission had to give its approval not for the project, but to begin a process. We were not able to do that until we had the deal worked out with the boat show, until the boat show agreed with the terms.
Thank you.
That was at the insistence of yours truly because it was-
That's correct. Yes.
Yes.
And my client was certainly under a lot of pressure to get that deal done. You're right, Mayor.
And correct me if I'm wrong, because people have said again today, as they did last time, that we can't move forward with what we're negotiating now because we heard that the boat show is saying that their space is diminished, income's diminished, when in fact, if I look at the numbers from the 2017 agreement, it looks like there was actually more space for the boat show, whether it's climate-controlled space, tent space, seven-point-something acres versus four acres of open space. So that's just not true, correct?
What I will do is I'll go through some of the specifics of what was approved in 2017 and then what both you and the mayor have negotiated with our client and with the boat show in the meetings we've all had together and what that space looks like.
Fine, yes. And that'll be really helpful because there's a misconception out there than what, because of what the mayor and I have discussed in our negotiations with the tenant, that for some reason now the boat show is, has less space, but that's not my take on it.
I know, we were both at a meeting, a Zoom meeting on November 12th, when that was discussed at length, the site plan.
Okay, thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
At any rate, turning away from the boat show just for a minute, the other issues that the mayor and the district commissioner have had since the project was before them the first time and that they didn't approve was the massing of the building and the locations of the buildings. Specifically, the buildings, and by the way, for everyone who's looking at this, what you see at the top is to the west, to the right is to the north, the bottom is the east, the beach, so it's turned on its side. So when I speak to the west, I'm talking about the top of the screen. Concern about having more open space on the site, more area for the public to congregate, as well as freeing up and making more open space on the northeast corner, which is that portion that sticks out to the right. That's, I think, one of the concerns that the commission had was the views both to the intercoastal and from the intercoastal to the beach, et cetera. So the project that was revised over the course of the summer resulted in this plan. Couple of things happened. The buildings on the west side, four buildings, were removed. Now, from the developer's standpoint, those are extremely valuable buildings to have lost. Those are buildings that have beautiful views up and down the intercoastal, views unobstructed to downtown. In addition, the buildings that are at the bottom of the right, at the northeast, had unobstructed views all the way to the downtown and all the way to the, of course, across the street to the beach. Those buildings have all been removed. That is now open space, green space, and areas for the public. In total, when you look at the site and how it's being developed at the ground level, I think this is very important because we do hear a lot about open space and how this relates to public land and public purpose. The commercial area on the site, which is the areas that are essentially open to the public in terms of retail, restaurants, shops, et cetera, represent three-point-four-nine acres, which is about nine percent of the total site, about twenty-one-point-nine percent, twenty-one-point-nine percent of the upland. The park space and green space that's been added to the site totals three-point-zero-six acres, about seven-point-nine percent of the total site, nineteen percent of the upland. So almost twenty percent of the upland area alone is now public park space. In addition, there's all kinds of other open space. Of course, the marina itself is all open space, but in addition to that, the upland has open space. So about thirty-point-eight acres is open space. If you look at the total site, it's unheard of on any other site in the city of Fort Lauderdale. It is unique because it's a big marina, but eighty percent of the total site is open space. Other marinas around the site or other marinas around the area do not have that high ratio of open space to developable land.
But isn't it true that there's a diminution of open space between what they have now and what this current site plan proposal represents?
This current, I'm not talking about the boat show, Mayor.
Talking only about the boat show.
I'm talking about just purely open spaces.
Talking only about-
I'll get to the boat show in just a minute. I can get to that in just a minute.
Okay. Let's just cut to the chase.
So I think what you're referring to is this site has a lot more open space from the boat show than anything that would ever be developed.
We understand that.
In other words, any new development, any new bringing of the public onto this site, any new restaurants, any new retail, any new residential, any improvements to the hotel will necessarily diminish the amount of parking lot area that currently exists. Fully admit that. That is correct. So turning now to the ground floor retail space, that space represents three-point-one percent of the total site or seven-point-six percent of the upland. Again, the smallest percentage of the area, that's the area, sorry, I should have told you what everybody, everything represents. The residential areas of the ground floor are in white, the commercial area is purple, the open space area is blue, and the new park and green space in green. So let's look at-
Back up, back up.
Yeah.
So the purple is at ground floor, though. There is residential over that, is it not true?
That is correct. That is correct.
It's not really, that's not just, so that needs to be explained.
So that's correct. There's residential above it.
Right.
But at the ground floor, at the area the public interacts with the site, that purple area is the area where the public will interact with that site. Now, it's in restaurants, it is in retail stores, but it's areas where the public will, obviously, is invited to attend.
So the condominiums, as you proposed, exist in the top left, the top right, the bottom left? And what's the bottom right?
That's, that is a condo building as well, down at the bottom right.
That's a condo.
It has been since the plan was redeveloped in about May or June of this year.
Okay.
Thank you. All right.
Mayor, just have a-
Go ahead.
Thanks, Robert. So, tell me the open space categorization, just so we're all tracking, the importance of mentioning what's open space is what? Why is that important to mention?
Well, open space is always used in calculations for site plan approvals, for any development application that we submit, we have to say what that number is. It's areas that do not have buildings.
Okay. So open space includes roads?
That's correct.
Parking lots?
Yep.
So, okay, so it's-
It's the percentage of the site, Commissioner?
Yeah.
That doesn't have any mass on it, that doesn't have any structures.
Right, yeah.
You can walk along, you can drive along, that-
Right, you can walk-
You perceive as open area.
Right. Okay, so you can walk on the streets or the parking lot, but it's not park space?
No, correct. The green area is the park space and again, that represents about nineteen-point-two percent of the upland area.
Yep, yep. Okay, thanks.
All right. So this is the plan that is attached to the boat show lease that's attached to your backup. This is a takeoff on it, showing the areas where the boat show has access under the current proposed lease under the 2017 plan. One of the things that, Mayor, you were concerned about when, and maybe one of the reasons you voted against it, is that this plan is a very different experience than what we all experience when we attend the boat show. One of the things you'll notice is there's no new main, there's no great entrance down at the northeast corner. You kind of come in around the buildings and then to some of Janet's points, in this layout, you actually do have to circulate around residential buildings, commercial buildings, and retail buildings all around the site. What you see here in blue is the area that's described as available to the show in that lease and in the exhibit to the lease, the other portions of the areas that are reserved to Bahiamar.
Wait a minute, wait.
And the orange area is the garage.
The blue areas around the perimeter are road.
They are.
And also, that blue area in the center is a parking garage.
The orange area is the parking garage, the area just-
It's the blue area.
That is a green area that was tucked between the buildings.
Okay, so the orange area is the parking garage?
That's right.
Okay.
So under the new plan, all of a sudden, and this came out of all those meetings we had and the meetings with the boat show, all of a sudden, all that space that was spread out all over the site is now contiguous, it's all consistent. It also has increased in size. It's gone from six-point-seven acres to seven-point-three-two acres. So two major things have happened. The space all makes more sense, it's bigger than what's in that current lease, it provides down at the northeast corner at the bottom right, a much better location for the existing welcome area and the entrance to the show where those tents can be located. And it completely carves out, as Janet was concerned about the folks who need to get into these retail buildings and the hotel, that area is in white, is no longer part of inner circulating with the boat show. So this, it's up to the boat, you know, the boat show is the one who puts on the show, but this plan is much more consistent and from what I heard at the meeting November 12th, works, I think a layperson can say it works better. Now, let's take about what actually this means in terms of tents. This tent plan is the plan that goes back to this plan, 2017 plan. And sure, there are tents located at various areas around the site. The orange area is the garage, where they would occupy potentially two floors, and then the two blue areas north of that, Mayor, which are green spaces where there was tents that could be located. This is the plan that's been shared with them since the meetings with staff, I mean, since the meetings with them, which has increased the climate-controlled area from, I'm reading off the notes here, from eighty-three thousand square feet to a hundred-and-fifty-four thousand square feet and including the, and actually adds open-air tent space of another forty-seven thousand square feet. So a total of about three-point-five acres of climate-controlled tent space, as well as open airspace of, of open-air tent space of one-point-oh-nine acres. The total site is much larger than what they have under the 2017 plan. So this is the result of those meetings and those discussions. This is where we were coming into the meeting last month, or a couple of weeks ago, and I just wanted to lay out why we got to where we were.
Okay.
And then I want to go on to some other quick points. As it relates to the boat show, and you can see this area that's all in blue right now, none of that will be a condominium, nor will it ever be a condominium. Under the existing, under the existing lease, the landlord under the boat show lease is Ron Bahiamar. The tenant is Ron Bahiamar. Under the proposed grand lease, it will be Ron Bahiamar. So there are no proposed changes to that. Ron Bahiamar will remain the owner of the current hotel, the new hotel, and all areas being provided for the boat show now and in the future. No portion of the boat show will be located within any condominium within Bahiamar. In addition to that, there will be condominiums in that central area. So how do we protect the boat show for that? First, it will be recorded in the memorandum of boat show lease. It's already in there, as a matter of fact. The lease already has language anticipating that there could be this issue. That's already in there. But in addition, above and beyond what's there today, the master lease recognition will be included, the phase lease, there will be a recognition of it, the master declaration, which is, controls the entire site, will be specific to the boat show in there.
Okay, stop.
Yep.
Master declaration.
Yes.
That speaks of condominium. So you're saying, first you said that Ron Bahiamar would retain ownership of the site where the hotel and the boat show would take place. Now you're saying there's a master declaration. Explain the difference to me.
Certainly. The entire site will be controlled by an agreement. I can put it that way. That will ensure that each one of the different entities within that, within that agree, within that site have to live by the same-
Who's the board for the master declaration?
We will-
Now you want to speak, Mr. Summerstein?
Give me the answer.
Yeah. Come on up. You understand my concern?
The developer will be the board.
Thanks.
Because declarations can be changed by a board. I want to know who's the ruling body for that master declaration?
Two points to answer your question. One, the controlling party is also Ron Bahiamar. And two, we have already agreed that the disclosures, which Robert has gone in through some of those disclosures, not all of them, there are additional disclosures, cannot be amended without the approval of the boat show. We've offered to the boat show all of these various restrictions that we're putting of record, okay? So their covenants running with the land. We're providing for these restrictions, notifying of the boat show's lease, notifying of the impact of the boat show, notifying of their rights to operate, and we've offered to the boat show to give us suggested language. If they don't think that the language they gave us originally is still good enough, we've offered to consider other language. We've also agreed that as it relates to that disclosure of the use of the rights of the boat show, that cannot be amended without the approval of the boat show.
And that's going to be in the master declaration?
That'll be in the master declaration. It will be in the memorandum of the master lease, which is going to be, if you so choose to notify your city attorney to negotiate the final terms of that lease, which has been drafted and has been sitting for many, many months, those provisions, as it relates to the restrictions, will be, as we've offered, will be added to the memorandum. It's already in the lease, but will add it in the memorandum of record. It will be in each of the phase leases, which will be of record. It will be in the master declaration, which will be of record. It will be in the contractual documents of each purchaser that buys any unit, and it will be in a covenant that they, the purchaser signs at the closing.
Okay, but getting back to my original question, there is a governing body for the master-
Is controlled by Ron Bahiamar, the tenant under your master lease.
Okay, so, so my concern is that any declaration can be amended? And, and-
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Any declaration can be amended? So if you're saying-
No, sir.
Oh, that's-
That's what I'm saying.
What do you mean?
The amendment process in the declaration-
Yes.
Will have a provision that it cannot be amended as it relates to the boat show's right of use without the written consent of the boat show.
Now, can that be amended?
No.
In other words-
Not without their, not without their written consent.
So you're saying to us, and I guess I'll get an opinion from my attorney here at some point, he doesn't have to answer today, but even the amending provisions cannot be amended?
The amendment-
Without their written consent?
Since we did the original draft, as it relates to the amendment, we have agreed that the amending provisions and those restrictions, each one of those two provisions, as you say it, cannot be amended without the approval of the boat show.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Barry, can I just ask Barry a question? Barry? Hey, Barry.
Now, he's used his two minutes, so he has to-
He has to. Seed. Barry, I got, and I think probably the whole commission did, got a letter, it was my, I haven't read the whole thing yet, but today at ten-thirty, ten-twenty or so, is, I haven't read the whole thing, but it seems like it's a letter to you about the, sorry, master the ma, sorry, master declaration and regarding the boat show and, do you want, yeah, Robert, just trying to understand what this is, or?
Well, I don't want to speak to what this is.
What this letter is? Okay. I'll ask the boat show or whoever.
Is the letter, who'd you get it from?
It was from Danielle Gunster. Actually, it was resent this morning from two weeks ago.
Right.
I'll let Robert talk to you because I don't know about this.
Sure.
No, it was sent to them.
It was sent to them.
No, we were all copied two weeks ago. We got that letter a couple of weeks ago, and it was resent this morning to us.
Which letter are you referring to?
The one from Danielle from Gunster, I believe.
The letter I'm referring.
November twenty-second.
November twenty-second.
Right, right. She's with Gunster, right.
Twenty-second.
Yep.
It was resent, right. We got it November twenty-second, and it was resent this morning.
Right. And it was where they were, they on behalf of the boat show were agreeing to extend, they noticed period another forty-five days. So they didn't send it. They were sent it.
No, sent it by.
Correct, by Gunster.
Danielle at Gunster.
Right, right.
I just wanted a kind of a update as to this communication, has there been discussion around this, or?
What's your client's reaction to that?
Well, I'll mention two things. So one of the first items, I mean, I can, I'll answer questions about it.
Yeah.
I think it came from, from their Gunster. We, I didn't get it, but their representatives, but let me tell you, I have gotten a copy of it. Couple of things are in here. Item number one, the boat show, you know, that the boat show parties be made of, a party of the master declaration to reflect that the declaration not be amended or modified in any way that impacts the provisions that run to the benefit of the boat show parties or the boat show itself. We've agreed to that. We actually proffered that at, at the meeting back on November twelfth that we were having with the boat show, and members of the commission were, were there. So yes, we absolutely agree to that. One of the other items in here, which was also proffered by, I believe it was Jimmy or Kenny during that meeting, was that we would be completely comfortable with the boat show lease running co-terminant, co-terminus with our lease with the city. So to the extent that the lease grants an extension, or the city grants us an extension, we're happy to amend the boat show agreement to have it run co-terminus. And as you, I'm sure you all have read that agreement, that requires two things. It requires that we continue to provide a home for the boat show throughout the life of that agreement, has to be in place, and it also requires the boat show to have a boat show on the site. So it works in both of our interests. Turning to a couple of other things real quickly as we were talking about public.
Well, we're referring to the last page of that letter, the forty-five day extension.
Yes.
Because I know Mr. Tate was, and I, when we were discussing things, they were concerned about the deadline in which they had to.
That's correct. Yeah, we, we are thankful for that extension, and we will continue to.
You acknowledge, you.
We acknowledge it. We do accept that.
Okay.
Yes.
And.
Oh, no, wait a minute, hold on. Barry's here.
Yeah.
Don't accept.
We would have been willing and would, were requesting and had requested the forty-five day extension because in response to what was said as to why the 2017 plan hasn't been developed, well, as you know, we are developing and have building permits in for the Marina Village. We've been holding off trying to develop the other parts to try and work with the commission to come up with a better plan, not only for us and the city and the boat show, we were holding off. In that, now that I understand Commissioner Shorenson, what letter you're referring to, you'll see that there are quite a few requirements in, that were imposed or being specified by the boat show in connection with their support. And so, we sent, we, we have advised them that we would be willing to extend for forty-five days if they give us an unconditional consent to sending a notification for development. But since we hadn't gotten a response doing that, we didn't feel that there was that unconditional forty-five day extension. So if the boat show is willing to give us that forty-five day extension, we are more than happy to extend.
Representative from Gunster here. Do you want to, can you come up here?
Let's, let's iron this out right now.
Mayor, also, I just, I haven't been part of all these discussions, so I'm just, I don't understand what forty-five days extension of what.
By tomorrow, and, and actually Barry, maybe you could explain this better.
It's in layman's turn for a.
They had to make, they had to give notification to the boat show what their intentions were in terms of what, what development they were going to proceed with, because next year the boat show needs to know what space they have available.
Got it.
In which to conduct the boat show.
Okay.
So now the boat show's giving them another forty-five days.
Okay.
To come up with their decision as to what they're going to do. And so that, so that's what the.
Oh, that's what the extension is.
That's the extension is.
Okay.
Now, what Barry is saying, we're happy to give the forty-five day extension, provided we're not hamstrung with all the requirements of the first, was on the first page and the second page, because they're not, they want to study those, and they're not prepared to respond to those yet. So I want to know right now, is that, can it be done unconditionally? Can the forty-five days be, can be tendered to them and offered to them without having to also agree to everything else in the letter? Please tell us.
Yes, it was not our intention that it be a conditional extension. It was just our intention that we would use the next forty-five days to work on resolution of these issues. That did not mean that we expected them to cave on all of the issues, just that we would have.
Okay. So it's unconditional? Do you accept the unconditional extension? Okay, we have an unconditional extension.
Let me go on record, on record that the time for us to give the notification at this point is extended for forty-five days to mid-January. So with the agreement of the boat show and the applicant, we so agree.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Ben, for bringing that up.
See, Mayor, you're making progress already. See how that works?
It's like shuttle diplomacy. Great. So just, just so I'm tracking, which I think is great, so the idea is this couple-page letter, there's several things the boat show is seeking. So what just happened is boat show and the developer saying, hey, let's, we have forty-five more days to continue to work through this, talk about, try to find alignment.
Right.
What just happened, including a bunch of the demands, there are the.
Correct.
Hopes that the boat show expresses in this letter.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Do you have much else? Is there much more that you have to say, Mr. Lockery?
Just a quick couple slides, real quick. Seven point three-two acres of open contiguous show space, and contiguous is key. Hundred and fifty-four thousand square feet of climate controlled exhibit space is under the new plan. Forty-seven thousand of others. The new main entrance, which was not in the 2017 plan, a better guest experience, all the way around with the waterfront exposure, more contiguous show area, and space setup and take-up down area. Just comparing the two side by side, what's approved in the 2017 lease and what's proposed. There was no specifics on the control, climate controlled space, that's now added. The open tent space was not specific. Total rent tent space and net leasable is one hundred and forty thousand. Total area, six point seven to seven point three acres. Again, going back, and I'll, I'll wrap up quickly and can go into the financials and talk about those aspects as well, but looking at the public purpose part of the project, as I've described, it's a new half-mile-long waterfront pedestrian bike-friendly promenade, new luxury branded resort hotel, multiple parks in the site, waterfront restaurants, the Marina Village, a safe pedestrian sidewalk along A1A on the northern side of the property, new and improved layout for the boat show, commercial and office space for the marine industry, and the establishment of the community trust fund, which is in the proposal. In addition, there's over about, there are over fifty million dollars of infrastructure improvements that will be made to the site, including a new lift station to serve the city, new FPL vaults, seawalls will all be brought up, site will be raised for resiliency purposes, all new infrastructure, all this additional improvements into the city's land, which will make the property assured that it will be here in fifty and a hundred years.
Okay.
Rob, let me, can I ask a question?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Robert, on that seawall question, I think it's great and will need to be done, obviously. What's the, show me, if you can show me on the, yeah, this is perfect, just the, the map there. So what, where would the seawall be built?
Sure.
Or raised?
So it starts in the bottom right-hand corner, where you see the, at the northeast side of the property. You see where the red restaurant building is. Seawall begins there, extends all the way to essentially where the peninsula begins.
Going south.
Going south.
Right, yep.
Extends all the way west.
Yep.
Then all the way to the south again, and back down the peninsula, and then back along the Marina Village.
Great. What's the, what's your estimation of the cost of that seawall?
I actually have that number. Fifteen million. It's about fourteen million dollars.
Fourteen million for the seawall, okay. And it doesn't go south after you hit the.
It's only on our leased property, yeah.
Yep. Okay, great. So about fourteen million for seawall. Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, fourteen million, the Marina Vill, anyway, I have some other.
Yeah, no, that's great. Thanks.
So the mayor left, does that mean I can keep going?
No, that means I'm in charge.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Finally, I can speak.
Now you're in trouble, Mr. Lockery. Now you're in trouble.
I was saving myself to last, actually, but, no, seriously, go ahead. Are you done, Robert?
I, I am. Again, we can go back into some of the financial numbers. Kenny Tate's here, he can talk about them specifically. I think one of the, some of the important things that you heard, well, here we go, let's go through these real quick. Ninety-six point nine percent of Behi Amar, this includes the Marina, of course, but will be open to the public. Of the, of the upland portion, putting the Marina aside, still ninety-two percent of the upland is open and can be enjoyed by the public. Again, over the fifty million dollars of improvements. Going through the rent payments today, the rent payments, the hotel and Marina are four and a quarter each. In addition to the increases in those amounts, the other proposals are revenue share in the residential sales, an annual transfer fee every time a unit sells, and of course, additional property taxes. Looking at the numbers based on the two thousand a square foot numbers that you heard today, the initial residential sales revenue share is about seventy-four million dollars. As applied to the rent, you get to the sixteen point eight million dollars. That's annual rent of three point seven. Taking the revenue share and spreading that out over the time of the, of the project, about four million dollars a year. And annual transfer fee, about eight hundred and ten thousand dollars a year, and then throwing in the annual property taxes, you get to sixteen point eight. Here's again a breakdown of those uses, the rent, the revenue share, the annual transfer fees, and the property taxes. And these are the specific elements that increase. So today, under the current lease, the office and retail is four point, in other words, we pay the city four and a quarter of all revenue that's brought in. Under this proposal, it'll be five percent. The hotel is currently four and a quarter, we're keeping that the same because that is a standard rate for hotels, to stay at about four to, four and a quarter percent to landlord of the revenue. But the Marina, and this is where the boat show revenue comes in, jumps up from four and a quarter percent to five point seven five percent revenue. So the city will be, will be earning essentially a lot more revenue from that boat show lease than what you currently have today. And of course, under the residential, there was no, there was no amount before, and it now goes to a dollar per square foot. That's where you get the increase in rent. The revenue share is about, again, spread out over an annual value, which is something we, we are now explaining that we didn't have in the presentation last time, is about four point four million a year. And the transfer fee, again, is about six hundred and ten thousand dollars a year. Property taxes go up to about eight million based on the new rates for what we believe the units will sell for. And here you see the percentage. The annual rent goes up by one hundred and eight percent. There's a new annual revenue share that didn't exist before, a new annual transfer fee that didn't exist before, and of course, the property taxes go up. The revenue share to the community trust fund at, at a quarter percent will yield about five point four million dollars. In addition, the transfer.
Over what period of time is five million dollars?
That's for the, about four to five years, so that's during build-out. And then the annual amount through future residential is about two hundred thousand through the transfer fee. So the portion of the city is about sixty-nine million, and to the trust fund total is about five point four million. And again, that's where the, the number breaks down as you go forward to about the sixteen point eight, including property taxes. About eleven million, maybe ten or eleven million without the property taxes included.
Robert, very quickly about the community trust fund, a lot of people have not really paid much attention to that, and I think it's significant in terms of also offering programs and services that the city has not been able to afford to do. Can you just talk briefly about the community trust fund?
Yeah, absolutely. And, and the Tates were instrumental in, in creating this idea, so I'm actually let Kenny talk to the specifics of it, so I don't say something wrong and get the hook again.
Good afternoon, commissioners and mayor. Kenny Tate for the applicant. The community trust fund is a concept, if you, I hate to bring this up, but if you think of the state lottery system and the education program, what the state did up there is they took money from one and paid for the other. We're trying to keep that separate, so we, we offered to the city this community trust fund where we want to take care of the operating needs of the city. This is not for capital expenditures, this is for things like in the city parks, to pay for uniforms, to pay for balls, to pay for equipment for the kids, hire coaches. If it's in the homeless sector, to pay, help pay rent, but not to build the structure. So we, we want these to be operational expenditures, and we offered to put up this money, which is a quarter, one percent, into a community trust fund to be held by either United Way or Community Foundation of Broward, which is based in Fort Lauderdale. And we would work with the city to come up with the specific parameters for this trust fund. And as I've expressed to both the district commissioner and the mayor, we would work with you on, yeah, they work off a donor advised fund, so we have to come up, create your, the board, so to speak, that would be the donors, who would make the advise, provide the advice to these community funds on how to spend the money. The community, either United Way or Community Foundation would actually make the final decision, as long as it met the parameters that we set up upfront. So there were the five or six basic themes that we wanted to focus on. As I mentioned, the, the inner-city parks programs, homelessness, the climate, climate issues, sustainability. There was affordable housing, and, and then one commissioner asked us to throw a little bit in there for historic preservation. So I, I think that's, that's everything. And again, we do not want to be the donors advising the community foundation, but we want it to be non-political, if possible. The commission can appoint those individuals, but we want them to be really outside the purview of the commission and to be doing what's best for the community.
Thank you. Kenny, do you want to add any, you were next to be called. Do you want to add more to your presentation?
No, I was really here, signed up just to answer questions. I didn't know your proper procedure.
Andrew Poole, followed by so. And that, is there anybody else who wishes to speak? This is all I have, signed up. Okay. We got a minority.
I had some, I had a couple of questions for the applicant, but you want me to wait till after?
Wait till after.
Okay, cool.
Do you want to leave?
Mayor, commissioners, Andrew Doolin, former. We, there's, I'm not going to address every point in the letter that we sent, but three of the important points to us are that, one is the lease does run the same length, that there is an extension. Two, that the show isn't governed by our, you know, condo association, that we're not having to deal with the condo association constantly. The other concern is noise ordinance and how we deal with that, because obviously it takes long hours to set the show up. So if we're governed by a city noise ordinance, or a condo association, or something like that, it's going to be impossible to set the show up in that period of time.
Those are contained in that letter, right? Those concerns?
That, that's all contained in here.
Yeah.
That was the main points I had.
Okay. I think now that we have them all actually now defined, we're going to, as a commission, we'll have to review with our city attorney to make sure that we're, what direction we want you to go in, and then try to incorporate those provisions in any agreements.
Actually, there's already some language that addresses those, but, and then I'll, I'll get back to you as to what I would propose we do, but.
Okay, all right.
Also, with the, with talking about 2017, we were trying to, you know, lease was about to run out, so we were, we had to agree to the site plan at that time, so it's as you described.
Yeah, I'm familiar with all that.
All right.
Yeah. Hold on, say that again, Andrew. I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm trying to read this letter, too.
So in 2017, we were trying, we, our lease was about to expire, so we were expected to speak on behalf of the project in 2017.
To agree to support the site plan?
Correct.
Of 2017?
Yeah.
Okay. What, just a question, and again.
Absolute false statement.
All right, well, wait, wait, everyone has a chance to speak.
What question, Andrew, and again, I haven't read through this whole letter, but last time we were together, all together, we talked about the current site plan proposal being maybe twenty-six percent reduction in land and a, around two million dollar, I think, projected revenue loss. Is that, so, is that still your analysis, number one? And then two, does the letter kind of address that or seek to remedy that, or seek to, I don't know?
No, it doesn't. It, I mean, the letter doesn't address that.
Okay, so, so if that's, is that still a concern of yours? The twenty-six percent reduction?
The site plan is better than the 2017 plan, which we've talked about, yes, but it's still, obviously, if you're going from five buildings to, to nine buildings, there's, there's less space available, which I think they've addressed this afternoon. less space available, which I think they've addressed this afternoon.
So it's still a concern, or it's not?
Yes, of course it's a concern.
It's still a concern?
Yeah.
So if it's still a concern, I'm assuming in this letter, when you're listing other concerns or wishes, and you say like, "The new site plan shall provide at least 30, 324,000 square foot of continuous space." So if it's still a concern, why isn't in this letter? Isn't that in the letter?
Because we'd already agreed to that in 17.
Already agreed to that. Agreed to what?
That there was, it was reducing the available area.
That it was reducing the, so you agreed in 2017 to a reduction in the area? Okay. And in 2021 site plan, there's still a reduction that you're ultimately not comfortable with?
So what that references in the letter is gross square footage, not net square footage.
Right.
And what Andrew's bringing up, it's no different. If we say something that the number changed two weeks ago, we're ambushing. And that's not a fair statement. They come back with transfer fees from 445,000 two weeks later to 810,000, and we don't care. But just because numbers change doesn't mean anyone's disingenuous in this whole process, Commissioners or Mayor. Everyone's trying to find a solution. As we've said, the site plan's a better site plan than 2017. We're not arguing that. But data points are data points. When we set up the show the first time it's redeveloped, maybe we're plus, maybe we're minus. We're just showing what we have, because tents haven't been built and sites haven't been done, but it's a better site plan, make no mistake. Can I keep going for a second?
Go ahead.
So, and by the way, happy belated Thanksgiving, happy Hanukkah to those who celebrate also. That said, so when you talk about 2017, we had three or four years left on that lease. And it was really important. Informa did step in and bought the promotional rights for $133 million. There's not any place in this world where they don't have 10 or 20 or 30-year leases. And did we agree to pay what we agreed to pay? Sure, you can't move that boat show. The most critical site, you talk about seven sites? We can lose every site. Can't lose that site, period. Most critical site. So when we have a payment that was made, we all agreed to it, there's no doubt about it, but you know what? You know how you guys sat up here today and just said, no disrespect, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, in terms of male gender that way, but you said, and you say, "You feel the pressure of inheriting this old site plan," right? And doing something to make an amendment to it. I think that's basically the tone that I hear here. And we're not in disagreement to that. We want a better site plan, but you feel the exact same pressure we felt in 17, when we didn't have a lease, when it was up in three and a half years, and we needed to know there was going to be a permanent home for this show. It doesn't move around. The other thing is-
So Phil, hold on, just, so you just felt like, hey, the lease is almost up, and we've got to make sure that we have a good working relationship with our landlord, and so even if it's something that's not great for us, we're going to agree because there's a lot of risk if we don't agree to it.
Look, we worked really close with them, and as we say, we are much happier with today's site plan.
Yeah.
But again, that bar, that horse had left the barn, if, for those who were involved in that process. And so we weren't going to get where we didn't have a seat at the table and wait for the lease to come up and renegotiate either. So we did. And now we're not talking about that. We're talking about a new thing that we like the site plan for. But when we talk about, you know, Commissioner Glassman, you brought up to someone in the audience here, "Call my cellphone, text me, come visit me." We can't do that with you. You know that. We cannot come and meet with you about any of these matters ever, unless we're in a public forum. Period. That's the rules. As the largest tenant of BEMR, that's the rules. And so when I heard Commissioner McKenzie mention we ambushed a few weeks ago, it's just numbers, Commissioner McKenzie. There was no ambush. We're trying to give you real-time data and real-time actions. That's it. We've told everyone the site plan works for us better than it did, but we're trying to show you there may be a reduction also. All of a sudden, that's disingenuous when we say it, but you're going to buy Blue Sky of $810,000 a transfer fee that doesn't exist at all. We know what we pay, we know what we bring to the community, and all we're asking for is a seat at the table for the other 364 days a year, not just today, because there's a lot of things that we probably could have worked out long before we started meeting about this issue. But the list, the list in this went to BEMR, the developers, and the Berry on the 22nd. As of yesterday, we, I believe, or the day before, we got via email or by courier the commencement of the noticing of the date. Today, we've all agreed that we want to give 45 days. There was no intent of not doing that. So, you know, at the end of the day, you guys feel like how we felt in 17. That's how you feel. You want to make other commissions that made poor decisions and try to amend it. And I commend you for that. I totally commend you for that. Just make sure we have a seat at the table for all these issues that we're talking about. That's the big thing. And they're working with us on master declarations and things, and we like that. But we don't know what we don't know. You don't know what we don't know.
So Mayor, I have a question. If we, it sounds like in 2017, the commission basically said, "Boat Show and Tates, you all have to come together to an agreement before we, the commission, will support going forward with the site plan." Is that, is that, do I, am I saying that right?
That's what eventually happened.
That's what eventually, okay. So if that was a good idea then, which I think it was, shouldn't we do the same thing now?
Well, we're kind of doing that. You're right. Yeah. We want to make sure that there's sufficient accommodation for the boat show. And my understanding is that despite this isn't optimal expectation of the Marine Industries Association, this is something that they could live with. That's my understanding.
Okay, that's-
But Commissioner, you just mentioned the lease, but they are, that was because back then, there was only three years left on their lease. That lease was, now it goes out, what, 30 years or so? And plus, we heard tonight that the tenant said, "We will extend your lease as long as our lease keeps getting extended." So that part that was the major concern in 2017 of the former commissions is no longer a concern, because that's all put to bed now.
The health of the boat show isn't a concern?
Well, no, you just mentioned, shouldn't we be concerned, shouldn't we do the same thing that they didn't?
Yeah, but-
That was the lease before the site plan, but that's already put to bed now.
See, in my mind, it's not put to bed, because I think the boat show still has concerns about the current site plan.
Well, about the current, I, but that has nothing to do with the lease that they already have entered into that now can go on in perpetuity.
The source it is saying is that before we agreed to any new site plan proposal, that proper accommodation be made to the boat show, just like we did in 2017.
Right.
We made sure that before the commission approved the site plan, they had, they had a new lease that gave them 30 years.
Right.
Saying, "We're sort of in the same posture."
But the objections we heard about the site plan from the boat show have to do with what Andrew just mentioned before, which was the condominium, they were concerned, the noise ordinance, those issues were already mentioned that Alan said he's working on. I'm not sure it's necessarily the site plan per se that's the problem, because we all agree that the site plan is head and shoulders above and such an incredible improvement over the 2017 for the boat show.
So what I'm hearing from the boat show, but I'll let them speak, is I'm hearing a 26% reduction in space and a $2 million-
Well, that's from a scraped version of what they're now. That, that's 26% reduction, not on the 2017 that they agreed to, but on the site plan now where there's all asphalt. Of course, there's a reduction. Because, right, because there's nothing there.
All right.
Right, so I guess, so-
I think we're just, you know, talking the same thing. We're just talking from two different perspectives, whether the perspective is from the 2017 plan or from what currently exists. Right now, we're just trying to find the best accommodation for the boat show operation. I think that's all we really-
Sure. And I guess it's a fundamental thing for me, as I'm just wearing my small business owner hat, is if we had a bad deal in 2017, which I think we're all agreeing, right? It's kind of not a good deal.
First of all, if we're not going to do a consensus where we raise our hands, nod our heads and say that we agree to something, then you can't say, "We all agreed to a bad deal."
Sure, fair enough.
You weren't here in 2017. Two of us were in 2017. One opposed, one supported. You don't know what the will or the facts were when we made those decisions to move forward, as the mayor so eloquently spoke about early on in the meeting, so it was a 3-2 consensus. That's what it was, not a bad deal.
Okay.
Now we're talking about, they were coerced or forced or what have you, but let me just say this, Phil, hold on, let me finish. You inserted me, so hear me out. When I look at the numbers, like $133 million, I look at all this money that's been kicked around, a billion-dollar boat show, and you indicated that, I didn't know how many days the boat show took. You said five days, but I'm very good at reading what is put before me. You've got 15 days before, you've got the five days of the boat show, and you have, you have the week of the boat show, and you have the five days afterwards to break down. I get that. I get that. What I don't get is how can a person of your stature, and you, Mr. Poole, millions and millions of dollars, go in a room and sign an agreement that you weren't comfortable with? You weren't comfortable with? I'm a small business person, like the commission on the end admitted to, and when I don't understand something, I go to my attorneys, I go to someone who give me that understanding so that I don't sign that paper and put myself in uncompromising position. But you come back here in 2021 with the ambush, as you call it, to say that you didn't like that deal. Then you also say to me that, "I love the position I'm in now with this new proposal for the boat show. It's much better."
100%.
Please help me understand why are we here today? What is it, like we asked Jan, what is it you want today that wasn't discussed with Commissioner Glassman or the mayor to come back this day and tell us what it is you want? You have a public forum, you have the Tates' permission, you have our permission now just to tell me. So I would understand today, before I go up or down with this, what it is you need right now to make this happen, because you didn't call me not one time in eight years.
That's not true.
Not one time in eight years. I got a couple conversations with your representative, but you didn't call me. You called me to store dockage over at one of the city sites. You had your representative call me. We haven't had, we had on-the-fly conversations, and I didn't want to put this out there, but everyone who's talking tonight, they didn't even feel the need to pick up the phone and call me or even have a meeting with me. One time, once.
So Commissioner-
But you came in to tell me what it is you were looking for, but again, forget what I said, forget all this happened. What is it you want me to give you today that you don't have from the Tates or this agreement?
So Commissioner One, I value your time, and I don't think that's an accurate statement. And actually, I reached out to you two months ago with Randall Vitale, who's from the Broward Workshop, about the train and meeting with you since the station and everything's in your district, so that Randall Vitale-
About what?
Randall Vitale and I myself.
About what subject matter?
About the Bright Line.
About Bright Line. We're talking about the boat show now.
I understand, but you said in eight years, I've never reached out to-
I'm talking about the boat show's subject matter. Yeah, we have had conversations. We had a conversation at the Yacht Club.
I'm not, we do. We, so we talk. That said-
But the subject matter I'm talking about today is the boat show.
So again, let's go back to that. So we're saying the site plan can work for us. We're merely giving-
It can work. So, so, okay, it can work, so I'm good with that. What else do you need?
No one has said it couldn't work.
But I'm with you.
Well, let me finish for a second. What was said was, "There's a reduction, just like the math here of, of transfer fees." It went up from the last meeting in your favor. You know, you do not pass go.
So, hold on there, because, you know, did it, did something reduce? Can somebody help me here? Is there a reduction, Steve?
There's a reduction, there's a reduction, if you're just looking at the space now that we saw that's all asphalt. Of course, there's a reduction from that, but not a reduction from the approved 2017 site plan.
Okay, that's what I understood, too.
Yeah.
But we're not talking about 2017.
So what, okay, what is it you need?
Well, I sent you a letter, so if you review some of it, I think you'll get that. Some of them have been answered today in terms of adding to the lease and things like that. Other things, noise ordinance and things like that, we need also.
What is it you don't have that you need today?
Please read the letter and then-
I read the letter, but I want the public to know, since the public told me that-
Make the letter public if you'd like. And the other thing, have you guys received a copy of our unredacted boat show lease?
Yes.
You guys, you did finally, when did you receive that? When did we receive that?
I haven't seen it. I've only seen the redacted.
I think we got the redacted. No, we got the redacted.
Redacted.
It's in the backup today. Isn't it in the backup?
Commissioner Glassman, when we were in a meeting with you, we talked about that, and we talked about the unredacted lease, and you said you'd like to see an unredacted lease, and we agreed to that. And that was, I don't have the date, but I would do it sometime in October.
Okay, so let's go back.
Right, is that a-
Let's just, hold on, let me, let me finish.
Is that an issue for us to get an unredacted?
Yes, so just send it.
Okay, so you can tender that to us.
So let's go back, so-
I think the nuance here is they want you to be able to see it, but not have possession of it.
So that it doesn't become public record?
Is that what it is?
Redacted. Okay. All right, so what was said from the audience by Mr. Tate was that we are allowed to go visit his offices to see the unredacted. Oh, you'll bring it to me? Okay.
So, Phil, please help me, because I want to help you.
I know you do.
I've been here eight years, and I've seen so many different renditions of the boat show and what they want. And I'm hearing it again and again. I just still need to know, right here today, one, two, three, or four items that you need, stated publicly for me to have an understanding of what it is you don't have now, because even the document itself from 19, from the inception, puts the boat show in first position. The boat show has to remain, the boat show is always a part of. So these other sidebars that we're having, even if we didn't agree to something, the boat show still has the option at the end of the day to be there or to decide if they don't want to be there. Am I correct?
So that happened-
Am I correct?
I'm going to answer you. That happened post this meeting, the master declaration part, post this meeting outside here.
What about the original document?
That was another thing. It's a living document. There may be something else-
But the only person, the only entity that can change it is the boat show. Am I correct?
That's what we understand.
So what, please help me, because I mean, I'm trying to help you, and maybe you need your legal team up here to answer my question, because you don't seem to understand what it is I'm asking you to help you vote this up or down today, because what is it you need? A, B, C, D, or 1, 2, 3, 4?
I'm not here to impede it one way or the other. We're merely transferring knowledge that we have on a real-time basis, Commissioner, okay? And so just like the letter that you received on the 22nd, and now you've received it again today, if you have specific questions, then I'll bring Daniel or Stephanie up, and we can answer them.
She's coming up now. I just want somebody to, please tell me what it is you want.
Commissioner, you know what? It would have been a lot easier.
If I had read it?
No, if I could have came to your office-
You could come to me anytime. Stephanie has an open-door policy with me, anytime.
So I can't talk to you about these things? That's what, you fail to understand. We cannot talk to you.
But you can come to me and say, "Phil's not getting what he needs," and we can, you know-
That's how we end up where we're at today. That's how we end up where we're at today. So we try to be as transparent as possible. We communicate effectively. We get accused of ambushes and things. There's no intention-
But see, that's, that's what hap, typically, typically, I don't get it, I don't have public dialogue. But when you insert me into the conversation with the ambush statement-
You brought it up.
You brought up new information at the last minute, last, the last time we had a workshop.
I gave you new information today.
I'm talking about what you did.
Mayor, 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 can we, Mayor, Mayor?
Hold on, hold on. But, hold on, I have an opportunity to ask questions.
Ask a question and let him answer.
I was in the back of the room, and he said, "I ambushed." He brought up the ambush statement. But here's what I'm saying, you have an opportunity to talk to me anytime, one-on-one, about whatever.
I don't.
You do.
I don't.
And I think the Tates also said, as long as they're invited, we can have a one-on-one meeting. Am I, can someone please help me understand what I can and cannot do?
He can, it's not what you can or cannot do.
But can, can-
He can or cannot do.
Okay.
He is not allowed to discuss-
Well, hold on.
Particularities of the contract without someone from the developers-
And that's what I just said.
Participation in the same room.
So why can't he come to me with the, with the parties who gave him that, that wording in, in the agreement they assi, they agreed to? Come to me with that party and tell me what it is you need. I want to give you what it is you need.
Don't you seem, don't you, can't you find that, why should we have to do that?
You just said you can't do it. You would love to come to us.
Look, Commissioner, we're, we're going around in circles around this. The reality of it's, it's contractually that way. Aside from this meeting, I can't do that. Unless I bring the Tates to the meeting. And there's no reason.
You don't wanna do that, right?
I don't have to all the time. Do they bring us to the meeting on some of the other points of issue here?
I, I would, in my meeting, you're more than welcome to come.
They don't. And so it's important to us that we get this right. That's all we're trying to do.
I just wanted to clarify my, my ambush statement.
I merely regurgitated the words that you used earlier about ambush. Wasn't my words.
And I'm regurgitating your words that you don't have everything you need now. Just please explain to me what it is you need.
Letter that you received on the twenty second. Today is the twenty ninth, or, yeah.
Twenty ninth, yeah.
Please review it. If you have a question, I'll be happy to come to your office and talk about it.
And Andrew, and Andrew told us the points today. And Andrew repeated the points that we talked to Alan about.
I got it.
We got it.
I heard that.
We got it.
Yes, I do have a question, Mayor, and Andrew and Phil, stay there, please. So, help me understand, Phil. Thank you. You did such a great job building this whole boat show and the Marine Industries Association. Help me understand a little bit of the history, cause I wasn't here for the whole eight years. I've only been here for four. So, I guess you started the boat show, right?
The Marine Industry Association owns the boat show. It, it's had three different promoters over the course of its life.
Okay, so you own it and then you sold the promotion.
The promotional rights is what has traded hands to Informa, the biggest show producer in the world, which again, there's nowhere that they operate without long term leases.
Okay, so Informa is just the promotional part. You still, you still own it. And Informa, you did see the new site plan before you became the promoter back in twenty seventeen, correct? What was the timeline? Cause it was right about the same time. I mean, you saw the site plan, so you knew which you were getting into?
In, in twenty seventeen, we had three years left, three and a half years left.
Right, and you had to renegotiate?
And, and so, we saw the site plan. There was a garage that, and Jimmy knows it and the Tates know it. We were not happy with it. But when we said, it's not the greatest garage, but you know what? If that was gonna go forward at that point, we needed to make sure we had a long term lease agreement, period, also. And we'll make it work, just like what we're telling you now. We'll make the site plan work, but we're trying to share with you the unknowns when none of us are around of what can happen. I understand they're very good at the legality of a lease. None of us are disputing that, but no one knows what a crystal ball looks like long term. They're making mitigation points that we think are good. We're sharing with you some of our other pains, like we need to extend move in, move outs, those things. So that we don't have to go and ask post this process again. Let's just do it all in this process. They'll know when we're gonna show up. We don't have to talk that much anymore and things will be good.
And, and I appreciate that. I'm just trying to wrap my mind around if, I guess if the twenty seventeen plan was so bad, I'm surprised someone would come in as a promoter and spend a hundred and thirty million or whatever to, to be part of it.
So they'd already spent the hundred and thirty million dollars.
Okay, so, and I, I do have to kinda echo, I think, what Commissioner McKenzie said. I'm super happy that, you know, you know, Steve and Dean have been able to sit down and talk to you all one on one. I do think it would have been helpful to sit down, even if, you know, the Tates were present and understand a little bit more of your issues and problems before today. And, and I, I did get this email this morning of this document. Like you said, it was two hours before. I, I don't have a new thing in my inbox from November twenty second or before today about this letter. So it is helpful to understand a little bit more. These issues are complicated. And we, we all, I, well, I won't say we, I'll just speak for myself. I care about the boat show. And I care about your success and your future. And I care about your past too. So we wanna get this right. So, I don't know kind of why it's, you know, kinda so choppy getting to this point, but we, we do, I wanna work with you. I wanna get it right. I, I do understand that you're losing twenty percent, but you're really gaining, you know, versus the, the twenty seventeen. So hopefully in this public forum, we can get it right. It sounds like we still need to go back and make sure the noise, the lease and the master declaration, you know, work for you. And I'm sure we can get to that point before we, you know, vote on our final lease with, with the Tates. So, thank you for coming today. I, I would like us to have a better relationship in the future cause the boat show is so important to me. And so, you know, maybe we do meet more often just to make sure things are continuing to go smoothly for you all as you operate.
I, I think we've always had a really good relationship with the commission. Every commissioner loved the boat show, so that's never been an issue.
No, I, I understand. I haven't had a lot of education personally, is probably what I'm saying. And I, I've been here four years and I, I don't know that I've really understood maybe as much of your issues that I, I'd like to. And, and it does help to discuss them in the dialogue because, like I said, it is kinda complicated.
Look, we're, we're at the table on, on every issue here, from workforce issues to transportation issues to building homes and Sis Trunk for Habitat for Humanity. You name it, we're at the table. And we're one of, obviously the largest employers, so we're.
Right, and, and I.
We're a blue collar, you know, industry that serves a white collar clientele. And we're proud of it.
And I appreciate that. And I did meet with Randall about, you know, the, the bridge and everything too, also. Another subject, but.
Let me ask you a question, excuse me. Since he mentioned it, how many homes, how many homes did you build on Sis Trunk for Habitat for Humanity?
We built three homes in that area.
Three homes.
Yes, sir.
A hundred and thirty-three million dollars and three homes you built. And you wanna throw that in my face? That's another ambush.
That wasn't an ambush at all. My, the point is we give back to this community all the time. I don't think that's an ambush.
You give back, cause that's what you need to do for your tax write offs.
About the lot, no, we actually talked.
Alright, we're, we're arguing here.
No, he needs to stop inserting me as an insult. And I have a right to respond. And I apologize for cutting you off, Commissioner Moritas.
Alright.
Maybe not right this second, but as we're deliberating, we're wrapping up.
Well, we, I never had a chance to really talk to him. I came to answer his, his statement.
Well, just, I don't have any more questions for you all. Like I said, I am thankful for what you do. And I just want you to know that before you, you know, leave today. I, I really do appreciate the boat show and everything you bring to our community. But I would also like to find something that works for this piece of property too. So I, I thank you for working together. I know it's not easy, but I thank you for doing that, you know, how you're lifting behind the scenes.
Thank you.
Yep, I do. Thanks, Mayor. Phil, has the boat show grown in size since two thousand seventeen?
So it was until COVID. And so, yeah, nineteen was its biggest year ever. And so it did a billion three economic impact to the state. Seven hundred and fifteen million dollars of direct sales, so a hundred and forty-three million a day. This year, we had to redo show like Los Olas. We didn't occupy that. Convention Center was being amended, so we moved back in. But we just had another economic study initiated again by Tom Marine Associates. It should be out in January. I think we'll push through the billion three and I know we're gonna push through the seven hundred and fifteen million dollars of sales. So even though it was a smaller in size perhaps, because of not being in Los Olas and because of the way the convention center was, we economically went through those numbers, I'm sure.
Point being, well, hold on, let me finish.
Just on that, on that issue. Just on the issue.
I'll finish and then you can go. Yeah. So, thanks, Mayor. So.
I apologize, Commissioner.
No, that's all good. Thank you. So, if the boat show has grown since two thousand seventeen, it's, put it this way, if two thousand seventeen was not a great deal, just because something's a little bit better than not a great deal, doesn't make it a great deal.
This is not just a little bit better than not a great deal. I, I, I'll debate you on that one.
Well, fair enough, fair enough. But it doesn't make it a great deal, just because it's better, right? You, you're with me on that.
Yeah, it doesn't make it a great deal, but, but you can't say that the reason they had the problem is because two thousand seventeen site plan, that never got implemented.
Alright.
So they never, they've never had a deal with that.
But compare.
For public hearing today, that's why I want, finish with your comments with these gentlemen, so that they can sit down. Do you have any more questions of these gentlemen?
No, I'm, go ahead, Commissioner, yeah.
So you think you did better this year financially with the boat show? Do you think in your heart?
Sales that took place did, yes, sir.
Okay. And then let me just go on record right now as my statement. I care a great deal about Fort Lauderdale. I think the boat show is one of my bigger economic drivers here. And I would never do anything, anything to impede that. This is why I've sat patiently for eight years, trying to get, you wanna have a smirk about it?
No, I agree. We have all.
Trying to give you everything that you possibly can get to be successful. And I'm still willing to do that today. And what I think is so important here today, when we reference twenty seventeen, is that we have two people sit on this commission. And one of them probably on here because of his opposition to what he thought was not a good deal, and that's Commissioner Stephen Glassman. And I think he's done a great deal of work. Bringing back to us what we needed to do to prolong this, this process. And I commend the mayor, again, publicly. He adamantly opposed this. Did a lot of community outreach. Was on the losing side of the vote. But here we are, four years, five years later, and he's gone out and he's done a great job, in my opinion, reaching out with everyone involved to try to come to a compromise. So with that, I'm very, very pleased. And I still want to know what your needs are. You don't have to answer it now. So we can get somewhere with it. So I'm not gonna dig into the weeds about some of the statements you made that triggered me today. Because even when you did Habitat for Humanity, you didn't have a conversation with me. That's something you did with Habitat for Humanity. I got the after, the after math of, of that. And I appreciate your efforts. But today, I'm willing and ready to, to be able to present something if the district commissioner is ready to move in that direction. I know we can't vote, Mayor. But I'm, I'm willing to put a, a, a working document out here so we can come back and so that the public can give all the input that they need each and every step of the way that has been explained both by you and Robert Lockery today. Just to, to be in a different position and try to leave this commission saying that we did something. We did something at Behilmar. And Alan, I don't know what our, our do's and don'ts are. I, I thought I knew eight years ago. And how far I can intervene with a lease or agreements with the developer. I thought there was a certain threshold that I could go and not opine or get into. And there are certain parts that only the parties in the development agreement can get into. I can only really just speak on behalf as a policy piece of it, as a policymaker, and not really sit down and negotiate the details of, of, of a document. So please, can you help me understand what my role is in this lease today, if, if that's what we're gonna do? Just so I get clarification on what I can and cannot do. So the public can also know what we can and cannot do.
Well, from, from, you're correct. On a policy standpoint, you can certainly speak to the developer because they have proposed something. And you can speak to them about your concerns. I mean, you are a policymaker. You respond to your constituents. So in that responsibility, you are able to fully discourse with them regarding what they're proposing. When we get into the meat and potatoes of it on some of the legal things, for example, that, that gets a little into the weeds. But certainly from a policy standpoint, you can certainly discuss with them aspects. And negotiation's kinda thrown out there, but it's not, the commission really is the one that negotiates. So you could literally say, I don't like this portion of it. You can certainly communicate that. It doesn't mean that you're negotiating it out of the agreement. You're just voicing your opinion.
Okay.
And I just want you to make sure that I'm, I'm continuing to have conversations with them. I, today's purpose was to hear from the public. We've had over three hours of public discor- discourse, which I think is very healthy. But I still encourage you to still go out and meet with everybody. You know, you all have a cell phone number?
You can call me. You have my number, cause a, a lot of you came and opposed the YMCA too, with some of the people that oppose it. So you know how to, to reach me. And also, someone had, had the nerve to text me a few minutes ago and say that, they called me years ago and I told them to lose my number. That is nothing that I would, that's not even my character, to do that. So Ann Hilmer, that is not a true statement. I do not. No, I'm saying, but, but no, but this stuff becomes public record. When people say what I wanna do, and you're still welcome to have a conversation with me at any time in the future. And my cell number is nine five four, seven zero nine, eight seven seven nine. But if you wanna get on my calendar, call my office, where they take care of my calendar.
Alan, what do you need from us today?
Well, I have a recommend, selfish recommendation. There, there are two things I'd like to be able to do, cause we do have these documents in house that are proposed. We haven't really been able to provide feedback. So some of the language you're talking about in abstracts with regards to protecting the boat show and, and having certain stipulation. There are things that we want to propose to the developer that we haven't been able to communicate. So I'd like to be able to do that and go back to them and say, from the city's standpoint, at least from my legal team's standpoint, this is what we think should be in here. Having the ability to do that and then coming back to you with something to look at. Cause for example, again, we're talking about the protections for the boat show and I've represented to you that I think that there's language in there that protects it, but you haven't seen it yourself. So to bring you back a document, doesn't mean it's being approved, doesn't mean I'm advocating for it. It just means these are terms that we've legally come to some agreement to. Ultimately, you make the decision. But at least you have something in front of you that you can look at. The business terms, we can go back and forth. If it changes, that's easy enough to fix. We can extract things, add some things. But at least to get the conversation going, cause it seems we're repeating ourselves. And from our standpoint, and I'm only speaking from our standpoint, we're not advancing in any way. And I think it would be a lot more fruitful for you to have all that information in front of you, so you can talk about specifics and put some of these things to bed if they're, if everybody's happy with them. We don't have to discuss.
So, so, so we, we're asking you now to start to collate the thoughts, distill these, these concerns into a document. And, and during, while you're doing that, I will continue to work with the developer in terms of pricing. And, and, and then I can come back to the commission at a conference meeting, which we can set for a specific conference meeting. And I'll report to you what I've been able to accomplish. And that is, cause we're, the public hearing was today. And, and so I'll report back to you. I believe that the develop, the, the boat show folks still wanna talk with you about how to craft that language. And I'm sure the developer would like that same opportunity. Maybe if we're all in the same room, that might be helpful. That way we can avoid any of those conflicts that people feel could occur. And, and let's move this thing forward so we can have some decision before the forty-five day period.
Well, and I just wanna make sure also, I, I think he needs to, Alan definitely needs to do that language for the boat show, cause I think we all agree that we have to protect the boat show. But I think we, at the same time, we need to start to see language to see if we're comfortable with a ground lease. That we have to start to see these documents so that we can weigh in. Because if not, we're just talking, 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 talking. I, I wanna see him actually come to us with a draft ground lease.
I think that would be appropriate at a conference meeting, so we have an opportunity to discuss.
Yeah, my intention would be to bring to you the, the proposed ground lease, the phased lease concept. Obviously, the goals won't get executed until that actually occurs. And obviously the master declaration, which we talked about again today, which puts a lot of the pieces together so that you can give us even more, you know, fruitful feedback once you see the language.
This will have all the terms and conditions, so we can weigh in?
I'm, excuse me?
This will have all the terms and conditions, so we can.
Right, it's, it's sort of the, the master agreement that controls the entire property and how all the parties will interact, whether it be access to the property, the rules. For example, the noise ordinance came up, you know, there's provisions in there already.
Everything we've heard, everything we've heard, because we have to start looking at words on paper. If not, we're just going around and around and around.
And if, and if there's.
I, 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 I thought we were very close too. I just, I just don't wanna keep getting here and then get surprises. Let's just get something we all can agree, both Phil and the Tates. So no one can back out. No one can say McKenzie did something. And I can just look at a document and opine on the document.
Mayor, I have a question.
But that doesn't mean McKenzie didn't do something.
Always do something.
Always do something.
Just like Glassman.
Mayor, question. So I think as we, you know, further delve into the, what's one of the most, you know, valuable assets of the city, we gotta figure out how much is it worth, right? As we think about ground lease and dollars. Right, so what is it worth? But we've gotta, you gotta figure that out, right? You agree?
We've had some testimony as to that.
Yeah, but what, my suggestion, Mayor, would be, we've gotta do a real, full appraisal to really understand what is this property worth. We do that with, you know, all pro- park properties we buy. So I think that should be part of the process to, to make you most informed and us most informed to make the best financial decisions for the city. Because as, to your point, this is a economic engine for our city. And we've gotta make sure we are getting what is appropriate for this key economic engine of our city. And the only way to do that is really a full, I think, getting a full appraisal. The Colliers did just a very, very high level overview, which is not really a full appraisal. So I think that should be, we should get that done to, to better inform all of us.
Engaged an appraisal firm, I think it cost fifty thousand dollars.
It costs, yeah, a little more than that.
In two thousand sixteen, I think. So I think we've just, it's five years old, so I think we gotta refresh that.
Reengage them for fifty thousand dollars.
This is an amazing property. I think we, we owe it to do a full appraisal.
John, John, what did you think about the appraisal you saw that we had, that we were based on? What was it? It was two, two hundred million or something like that? And then it was a lot less if you considered it encumbered land. And were you, were you comfortable with what you saw?
I'll preface this by saying, a real estate expert. So, and I, I don't wanna pretend to be one. So I don't think there's anything wrong with getting another appraisal. I don't know though, that that is going to change the direction of the conversation, depending on how you choose to go with the lease structure. So if we're moving along a path where we're going to get a cap rate based on the value of the land, then I think it's absolutely critical to that process. If you're moving along where we're going to be getting base rent and a participation in the ongoing revenue streams, I don't know that it, that it's valuable in that conversation.
Exactly. And we have to have that conversation, because we saw, we, we have to have that choice.
Valuation or.
Right, what John just said, the cap rate based on that number of an assessed valuation. Or are we looking at that ongoing revenue stream that we saw a little bit more tonight, which had a little bit more detail, based on a higher, you know, square feet dollar amount. We have to have that conversation.
I can tell you this, Commissioner. Based on what Colliers gave to us, I don't think, if we ask for a, a, a regular appraisal, it's not gonna be going in the right direction as far as the developer's concerned.
But it's gonna go be in the right direction for the city. And we've gotta protect the city interests on this.
I'm, I'm not disputing that. Don't applaud, please. I'm not disputing that. But even at the amount that Colliers has proposed to us, is already being disputed by the developer. So going in the other direction is not getting us where we need to be.
It's getting us the truth of what this asset is worth.
Talking platitudes, but that's not.
Yes, it is, it is platitudes. And I'll tell you why. Because we first heard that we were looking at maybe ten point eight million if we look at a cap six to seven percent, which you discussed last time, Mayor. Ten point eight. But now we see, based on some new numbers that Dan Texara gave us in terms of two thousand dollars a square foot, if we look at an ongoing revenue stream, now we're now looking at maybe sixteen, seventeen million a year. So we have to have that conversation in earnest, that's all. We just have to have that conversation. There's a big difference between ten point eight million and sixteen million a year, based on revenues. If anyone knows anything about real estate industry, it only goes up. It only goes up.
Oh, amen.
Alright, so giving the authority to the city manager to engage the same firm, I guess you might as well engage the same.
Great, a full, perfect.
I was going to look to the direction of the commission.
What, for the appraisal?
The appraisal that Lee Feldman had engaged back in two, twenty sixteen, do you wanna?
Well, I think based on my little experience I have, you can always go back and not to do a full appraisal. They can just update that one for not as much money. So find that answer out first and then come back.
If we can get it sooner than later, let us know.
And again, we have to answer John's question about which way we're going in terms of just the cap rate on a flat assess.
And I think it would be helpful to, to respond to Commissioner Sorenson, if we knew what the actual value was based on.
Thank you.
Conditions, then we'll have some better understanding. But in the meantime, before the next commission meeting, if you could come up with that number, so we can make a decision then.
And I think, and Mayor, just, so I think that's all great. Completely agree. And in that appraisal, I think it's important to have the evaluation of what is, like in the two thousand sixteen appraisal, it did fee simple appraisal of the, of the property. And then it also tried to calculate with encumbrance of the lease and. calculate with encumbrance of the lease and so forth and did an appraisal of that. So I think that entirety is helpful.
There were three basic values.
Exactly.
One's fee simple, one's with the zoning that currently exists as fee simple, and one with the current encumbrance.
Right, exactly.
Happy to buy it from the current encumbrance value, but...
Yeah, so I think that's...
All right, so anything else?
So we're moving, just so I understand, we're moving forward with a ground lease right now.
Thank you, everybody.
Hold on, hold on, Mayor, don't cut me off.
Wait, wait.
I just want to understand what it is I'm agreeing to.
Why are you waiting for me?
Are you converting? Mayor, you're converting?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner.
So it's going to have all the terms and...
Well, Alan is going to start to pull together the documents with the developer and with the boat show people to make sure that we start, we have something now we can sink our teeth into, give it to the community to read, because I know we have a very talented community with a lot of expertise out there. I've learned that over the years.
And Mayor, is that going to be valuation-based or revenue-based?
I'm sorry, go ahead, you can go ahead. You can cut me off, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead. Is it valuation or revenue-based?
No, this is the...
What he's going to be working on?
It's just...
Right, I'll be working on what's been proposed. So on the business terms, it'll probably, it'll be the original proposal, I'm not going to change any of that. We'll let them propose that, and then, to the extent the commission, after negotiations or after discussions, want to change that, we can tweak the agreement to change the terms and conditions. But for things, for example, master declaration and how folks are going to interact, obviously, that a lot of those things will remain the same regardless of what the revenue stream is.
Okay, so D2, are you satisfied?
Yes, and when are we going to see this?
January or February, probably. I'll have to look.
We could do January, because a lot of it is written.
Just don't make it the first meeting, because I won't be in town.
You won't be here January 5th?
No, I'll be out of town.
All right, I don't know if they have a date for it.
Okay. Couple of questions, so is the appraisal will be done in advance of this?
I'm going to seek out an update of the 2016 appraisal and ask it to be renewed to a current status, and we'll see where I, we'll see where I get to when I ask that question.
Okay, and then does the 45-day, is that okay? You're okay, or we, does it have to happen within the 45 days, I guess? Is my thinking it does? So is January 5 within 45 days, my math?
No, January...
January 15 is within 40, so anything before January 15. So then the only option would be January 5th?
Yeah, because we meet the 18th, we meet the 4th, 5th, and the 18th.
So 18th is too late.
We can get another extension from the boat show, if necessary.
Okay, so aim for the 5th, but it may need to...
I'm telling you, I won't be here on that date, so I don't want, I won't be here on that date.
He's not here on the 5th.
No.
So can we, maybe Mayor...
So let's do it earlier.
We're not making any decisions then.
I know, but I want to be a part of all these discussions.
Mayor, just an idea, maybe we extend it...
No, 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 no.
Forty, maybe you ask them to extend it 49 days or whatever, so that January 18th can work for the parties and the commissioner, just an idea.
Yeah, I just want to be here. I waited eight years.
I don't know.
Make sure you're here.
Well, if it's just a conference meeting, why don't we set another date, just like we did today?
If it's just conference, why don't we just, yeah.
Do they, do the 18th?
When do you come back, Commissioner McKenzie? Want to do it?
What's the first commission meeting?
January 5th, because we moved it from Tuesday to Wednesday, and then we meet the 18th.
So let's have it on the workshop on the 18th?
We also meet December 21.
Is it 18 or 21?
We meet December 21. We have two meetings in December, the 7th and the 21st. What's today, the 29th or November?
December 5th is the Wednesday. Are you here on the 4th or you go on that whole weekend?
No, we meet on the 5th.
We are, at least...
I know we're meeting on the 5th, but on...
I think I leave that night, and I don't, the night of the 4th, I believe.
You want to do the 3rd?
We were changing the dates early on. I told you all this, that's my birthday, we can't typically leave.
Right.
And we weren't going to do anything heavy that night.
Yeah.
So now this comes up, and I'm just letting you know...
How about the 21st? If it's a conference, how about just the 21st? That's in a month.
Okay, that's fine. I just want to make sure I'm here.
You get ready by then?
A month?
Well, the 21st is in three weeks.
Yes.
So we can meet on the 21st if you want. I mean, what do you have scheduled for the conference?
Alan said he has most of it already done.
Well, can I let him answer?
I'm sorry.
So the conference meetings are fairly, fairly full, and also recognize that on the 21st, there's a good chance that if that 808 project defers from next week to the 21st, that would be on that day as well as...
That'd be night.
That'd be night. Just depends on if you want to start at 11:30 and try to get this by the 21st. I really more defer to the city attorney than me at this point, because the heavy lift is really his up until the point he gets done, and then I'll have more of a heavy lift with it, so...
I mean, it's hard to predict the back and forth, but, you know, I'm sure we can get something to you by then. There may still need a little, you know, there may be some points where Barry's still beating me up on, so we'll have to...
We're going to have a lot of work to do anyway. It's just a beginning.
Commissioner Sorenson, I don't know whether we're going to have an appraisal done.
I will not have an appraisal by the 21st. Right now, appraisals on just residential lots are taking a month, so I will, I would